And lead the way. Um.
Recording in progress.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here with us again here today. We're gonna, we're gonna move forward with the study session before we go into the regular special meeting. I know Mr. Deeb is gonna go ahead and lead the way here for us. Uh, Mr. Deeb, do you know who is here with us today? Can you give us any of the names? Okay, well, we'll get here when whenever we let them present. Is your microphone on? Vince uses a lot of hand language out there.
Yeah, um, I don't know who's with us tonight. Um, I assume they're contractors.
Okay. Can you just raise your hand if you guys are contractors? Okay.
Okay.
No, thank you. That is absolutely it.
Okay.
Uh, so it looks like we have two here with us.
Okay. Um. Good evening, council members. Um, I'd like to start this short presentation. Again, I stress short presentation. Uh, by going over the contract forms, uh, we advertise for bid and follow up by explaining the evaluation process and the rationale that we use before we make any recommendations for award uh to the honorable counsel. So one, the bid formats that we use for this project is called the unit price contract. And this simply means that we try to identify and include every work item that we expect to encounter during the life of this contract. So if you look at the first night, I left um every council member a um um copy of our um um handout. Uh, basically, um, I'll follow through with um um the PowerPoint. So this is basically the same thing, but I'll make it easier to look at the paperwork in front of you. So if you look at the um, the first slide, uh, the first sheet in your handout, you'll notice that we included in all the items that we expect to have to address during the concrete sectioning repair contract. Examples will be the seven inch concrete pavement, eight inch concrete pavement, replacing failed drainage structure, earth excavation, base course aggregate, et cetera. I also like to mention that some of these items that came up during the last week's discussions were simply pay items and they're part of the contract, things like um traffic control. Uh, if you look at the um quantities that we estimated and the unit for each item that we put in that uh bid sheet, so traffic control is a lump sum, meaning that this is all we're gonna pay for traffic control for the contract terms. So uh, things like cones, um, you know, any traffic control measures. Uh, the lump sum that we obtained before we award the contract, it will be the total we pay for the entire contract. It's not every time you've sent an invoice, you're going to include that number. It's just a lump sum. The rest of it is a unit price contract, it's cost per square yard. So the next item on that list will be remove and replace seven inch concrete. So the pay item will be as uh paid by square yard. So if I have a ten by ten, ten square yard, we will pay the awarded contract bid price for that amount. And so on, the rest, for the rest of the contract. So that is the idea for a unit price contract, which is different than uh when you say a total lump sum contract. That will be a one price for the entire thing. Example will be this room, we bid it as a lump sum, it it's a total contract cost. This by by definition is a unit price and we pay that way. So this is what came up last uh last Tuesday in the discussion. Why are we paying for cones? That's part of it and every contractor submitted price for that. Now, uh, number two, uh, well, we we like, we asked the bidder for an all inclusive unit price for each of these items. And we pay only for what we use and only based on their unit prices. Again, we pay the unit price for that item we use. So when we do a task on this contract, we have someone in the field, uh, we mark the location, bless you. We mark the location and we pay based on the unit prices that they submitted. Uh, so for instance, if the concrete, uh, if we replaced a section of concrete and it was seven inches and it was only ten by ten, we pay for the unit price for the concrete only. If we encounter bad subbase when we remove the concrete, then we pay for that. Uh, there, we try to estimate all the issues that we might encounter. So that list on page one represents every possible scenario that we think of. Now, that's not to say that we're not gonna get something that we don't think of. Last year or a year before, uh, ran into a part of uh um uh an old septic tank. That's, I didn't have price for that. It was, yeah, it was, part of it was still there. So once we removed the pavement, we we had to deal with that before I can put new pavement in. So we try to get the stuff that we can think of, there's always chance that we might get. I had um um section of the street that was only nine years old and and I found the pavement to be four inches as opposed to eight. So again, that means now I remove the pavement, I have to excavate, put a new base. And so we use the unit prices, we track it based on what the bid number was and we pay when we get the invoice, we verify it and we pay it that way. All right, number two, the solic- the solic- solicitation was publicly advertised and and we received seven proposals. So if you look in your handouts, um, I put the proposals in orders, I didn't put the names of the companies. Um, I just put them in orders one, two, three. Uh, you have copies of them in your handouts. Um, the bids were evaluated uh for compliance with the proposal as well as completeness and the contractor's ability to perform the work. So bids were compared side by side and presented in your hands out as cost comparison for bids submitted. So if you look at that, this page, this page here shows um the comparison of all the bits. The top number on top is the order they came in. And then the uh left hand side, I put all the work items, the nineteen work items that I mentioned earlier.
Hold on one second for me.
Okay, it should be after.
Number is that?
You don't have that. You sh- you should have that.
Oh, I do, I, we have the summary.
It should be, it should be summary.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be in the, yeah, it should be there. So this will give you at a glance, uh, comparison of all the bits submitted for each line item and um and how they rate. Again, no names, uh, I have the names of the companies, but um. So each one will show for each uh uh line item, what the bid submitted was plus the total contract value on top. So this is just, this is what we go through when we evaluate the bids. We put them all together, find out what uh what the charges are for each item and then um uh we'll make the recommendations to you. So bids were compared side by sides and presented to you as cost comparisons. And now the costs that we 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 obtained varied from two million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars to four million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And you can see uh in your handout, I put a next page um is the cost difference or the bidder's cost difference between between each bidder. So there's no names, no company names, just the bidders. And then you can see what uh, this will give me an idea what my cost will be if I compare bidder number one to two, to three, to four. And then I compare that number to what my available budget is for that project. And then this is what I recommend to you for approval. So as I mentioned um uh to you last week on Tuesday, our Act Fifty-One entitlement is two million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars annually. Now, this is for all local uh roads in Dearborn Heights. My only objective in this and every other contract has always been to try to stretch this budget as much as possible to manage one hundred and fifty-three point seven miles of local pavement. And of this local pavement, more than seventy percent is in need of attention. So I have um one hundred and fifty-three point seven miles of local, I didn't include the major road. One hundred and fifty-three point seven uh miles of local roadways with seventy plus percent needing attention. And my budget is two million, three hundred eighty-three mil- uh, thousand, eight hundred dollars, I'm sorry, two million, eight hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred annually. Now, that budget comes from Act Fifty-One, so it's not a budget that you guys um um set. It comes to us from gasoline, money, state, based on population, all that good stuff. So furthermore, in evaluating the seven bids, I noticed that our um low bidder was one company, the second low bidder uh took some exceptions to our price sheet and listed possible price increases as well as um uh minimum purchase quantities, among other things. No one else, so seven people bid that contract, six accepted the terms and one had exceptions to it. No one else had any exceptions. In addition, the same bidder did not follow the itemized bid prices and gave me a penny for, or no cost, to three important bid items, earth excavation, subgrade undercutting and base course aggregate, which is the twenty-one double A, that's the base course that I used. Now, um, instead, the bidder combined the costs into one concrete placement cost, meaning that we have to pay for these items whether we, regardless if if we need them or not. So by combining that cost, um, I have to pay for that unit price for the concrete, even if I don't need the base.
Mr. Deeb, I just wanna interrupt you for one second. I have a question.
Sure.
So, you know, I'm very familiar with this business.
I know you are.
About the concrete.
I know you are.
Um, usually any piece of concrete you remove, uh, the base of it, aggregate, everything has to be compacted, put back in. Technically, if if the way we're bidding now saying some might need, some don't, we're shorting ourselves.
No.
Because because there's a reason that piece of con- that 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 slab or that section we're moving is damaged. It's either damaged from water getting under it.
Mm-hmm.
It's cracked, whatever it may be.
Yeah.
Base, the bottom base of it has to be filled back in. So when when a lot of contractors, what they do in engineering firms is that they put an eighty or eighty-five percent cost concrete plus uh, you know, other expenses. That's how concrete, the right way to do it, but for us to base every single item per dollar, how do we know? And 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 no offense to anybody out here, how do you know if one contractor is telling you um, every single section we take here, whether it's a ten by seventy, uh, seven by seven, whatever kind of slab it is that we need or we don't? To be honest with you, there's, there's a lack of oversight in the city, for one. Number two, that, for myself, I seen this last year, is one, nothing was being put under the cement when it was removed, uh, suctioning on Sheehan, there was no rebar, there was no oversight. So when I, when I looked over these contracts, I'd emailed you on the thirtieth.
Yep.
Seven thirty.
I had applied.
Remember my email, we went back and forth.
I had applied.
And my thing is that every single section that we do take out in the city should have some kind of form of fresh concrete, whatever it may be, put under it, compacted.
Absolutely.
Inspected, rebarred, cemented back with cylinders on site, right? But for me, I would personally, as as a resident of this city, I could combine the cost into one, I I think it's it's a, it's it's a better pricing unit, it's a better pricing system.
Okay, can I answer?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so, um, I agree. So the difference between, so this format is M dot, we use, that's been used all over. So this is not something that we came up with. This is about the fourth contract that we use this format on, it worked beautifully. We, you guys actually approved one in May, exact same format. Now, the reason for for the subbase price separately is some of them, we didn't have any subbase. Some of them, we, like I said, we actually found four inches, so I had to excavate, so I needed a price for that excavation. If you go and include it all in one, the bidder can't tell you if this is, so if I have to go and remove four feet, I'm taking worst case scenario, that is not included in in that, in that unit price he gave you. Now you have earth excavation. And if I wanted to go with with a company that didn't give me a price for earth ex, I'm I'm wide open for for uh an extra. So that's the reason why we ask, we ask for, what is the cost for ex- uh, earth excavation per cubic yard? So if I have to remove four inches, it's not the same as four feet, right? So I I go in and say, what is your cost to rem- to remove per cubic yard?
But the cost of that and and the, and the second contract, that's that's a backup contract, is included in that unit and the overall price.
Not, not for the drastic stuff, no, 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 it's not, it's.
Okay, but how?
Sure.
With three million dollars of 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 contracts, uh, uh, on this contract, about, how highly is it? Likely is it that every single slab we pull out needs four feet of excavation?
I I'm not saying it is, on some instances, some instances, I had zero.
We do last year.
Some, some, we had over fifty percent, we didn't have to do much of anything, there was a base, it was still, we compacted it. We compacted the base, but the base was intact and fifty percent, but that's not a guarantee that going forward.
But last year you said fifty percent, we did, there we go, but last year you said we were doing, paying fifty-seven dollars a square foot. We were actually paying a hundred and sixteen dollars a square foot.
Uh, we we bid it by square yard, not.
Or, I'm sorry, square yard, because you were at fifty-seven dollars last year.
No, fifty-seven, wait, timeout. So the contract you approved on Tuesday for fifty-seven dollars was full replacement.
We didn't replace nothing on.
No, no, you, you.
This was not talking about last year.
Timeout, timeout.
Last year.
This last Tuesday, you approved five streets, change order, the same cost from last year, fifty-seven dollars a yard. And that was for full replacement, because he's, he's doing full replacement. That's different than doing sectioning, sectioning is more expensive. We were paying seventy last year, we're paying, the low bidder is seventy this year.
You, no, 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 we're, that that's full replacement of the streets.
Full replacement was fifty, it's uh fifty-four dollars.
Push this on the record, last year, we had Angel Cement, correct?
First piece was Angel, yes.
Right, and you came up on that podium.
Yeah.
You said there were about, you could never touch that price for fifty-seven dollars.
I'm I'm gonna tell you what it was, I think, uh, I remember this, and Councilman David Abdullah voted no. It was six dollars a square foot, wasn't it?
But it came out, when you did all the sawing, the excavation, everything, it was actually a hundred and sixteen dollars. Or am I a hundred and sixteen, right, or a hundred and seventeen dollars a, it came out, we were paying double them.
And I believe what was happening was, we were told since that was a square foot, but then they were charging us like cover, you know, precaution paper, the orange barrel.
So, so you didn't.
Ended up adding up to being.
Okay, so can I go back to the first sheet and look at it again? So in that sheet, the number one.
Mr. Deeb, real quick, guys, keep in mind, this is supposed to be informative, this isn't supposed to be a back and forth, right? And I get that, I just wanna make that very clear, this is, this is for proper information, that's all we want, we want the right information, that's all.
So in in the, in the first sheet, uh, you look at item number one, traffic maintenance and control. These are the lump sum that we pay for each of these items. The only exception last year is we had last year poor, the last end of the season. And they, we had a, an unusual cold weather and where there wasn't a pay item for it and we asked them for winter protection. The winter protection was not on the item, and this year we do not intend to pour concrete in the freezing drain. So this, this, what we paid for covers and traffic control is listed in this contract. So if a lump sum, if a lump sum, let's take one of the contractor, lump sum came in at uh nineteen thousand dollars. I'm just taking one of the contractors. The nineteen thousand dollars is for the entire year for traffic control, not for every invoice they give us. So you can, you know, if you're at ten percent of the contract, you can bill ten percent of the nineteen. But the total for the entire contract cannot exceed that number. That's why it's a lump sum. And this is how we treat every um um item on that bid. So let me just finish, I'm almost done, and then we can. So, um. So, um, regarding the uh exceptions that were taken uh by one of the bidders, so um the issue with the, with the base, I'm gonna go over it one more time. The base, uh, the twenty-one double A base is needed, we pay for it only when we need it. So if I have, if I have a a concrete section that was built on um uh topsoil, we asked the contractor to remove it and put a base and we pay him based on the unit prices they gave us in the bid. So that's how we pay for bases. Uh, lastly, um, um, after last Tuesday's um um publicly broadcasted meeting, um, I received um um couple uh contested, um, uh, one email contesting the um um the second bidders um bidding of zero and including that, that's not, that's not how the specifications were written and they they need to be given. I included copy of that email for you to review. Um, I didn't reply to it because that's your decision, you wanna do, you wanna proceed and, you know, it's fine by me. Uh, finally, um, uh, it is my duty to provide you with an impartial facts regarding this bid. It is up to this honorable counsel to make the final selection. Based on these facts, please note that while we, you do not have to award to the low bidder. And if the second bidder is disqualified based on the uh not following the contract specifications, that will take me to the third bidder. So if I go to the third bidder, the price is now three million, five hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, which is one million, two hundred thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars over my, over the low bid prices. And for the record, it's also seven hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars over Act Fifty-Nin- Act Fifty-One annual road budget for the entire year. So based on the above, once again, I respectfully recommend award to the low bidder and uh for it not to exceed two million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, and I'm ready for any questions.
I had just one question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I don't know, um, that the street off of Hess, remember that one that we did, the full street repair?
Right by Stan Linus.
By Stan Linus?
Yes, yes.
Who did that work for?
Uh, forgot the name, it wasn't, it wasn't.
We didn't remember in October or whatever.
Yes, it was, it was Tony, uh, uh, Mark Anthony. Mark Anthony, Mark Anthony.
Mark Anthony. And then who also, thank you so much, who also did our work on Beach Daily?
Oh, uh, Pamar, Pamar Construction.
Large construction, I think, did a phenomenal job on Beach Daily, and I'm just.
Yeah, these are large contracts, so just please understand, this is a sectioning contract. The reason, the reason we we you get, you pay more for it because you're jumping and you're doing, you might be doing one slab and and on Hess and then you move to uh uh, you know, the south end for two slabs. So it, the mobilization, um, i- it costs more to do small pieces as opposed to full street.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the council now, I ask you guys keep it respectful, I'm gonna start with Councilman Saab, go through the council here. I know, I believe, Councilman One, our Councilman Model's next, and then Councilman One, so.
I have actually a few questions, Mr. Deeb.
Yes, sir.
Um. Again, I actually have some fixtures that we were gonna put up on here from last year, I believe A and G did some work for us. I had an issue with the performance of the work, the cleanup, where the cement water is being dumped back into our sewers. And all these were never addressed. And then I I've I've talked to you multiple times about the peeling of the cement. And you said it was an issue, that the national cement, uh, what uh.
Yeah.
Whatever was looking.
Talking about the peeling.
But but again, who's responsible for it?
Okay, so.
So that's the first question, if you want me to go through all the questions, I'm gonna go one by one.
You know, one by one, because I have a real old memory. Um, so the the uh, the peeling, um, if you notice, one of the reasons we rebid this project is, if you recall, when we talked about the peeling cement, this is not a Dearborn Heights issue. Dearborn got hit hu- hundred times more than we did, and it's, it's statewide. And the reason for that cold weather, so I waited for for um um American uh MCA, Michigan Concrete Association, to come up with the fix for that. Um, they were using a type of cement called uh Type L, uh, which limestone, five to fifteen percent limestone in it. And it was authorized uh after the shortage of cement uh back with COVID era. So that cement proved to be fine except in cold weather. Uh, so in cold weather, um, uh, it was exhibiting uh uh, you know, flaking on top. Now, the flaking uh uh is cosmetic. So what we did, the first thing we did is, before we paid the contractors, we went and core tested the material and sawed the Dearborn. And I'm coordinating with many uh communities on that issue. So I met with the Dearborn City Engineer, Saud, and and he showed me what they did. Basically, exactly what we did, we core tested the mid- the pavement and and did a compressive strength test. So we broke these cylinders, they were asked, we were asking for, we have records of that. Uh, four thousand PSI for ours, we were coming in at five and six thousand. So the issue is not, is not structural, it's not a failed structural, it is cosmetic. So with that, uh, we contacted M- uh, uh, MCA, um, what would be the list? So we included in this RFP when we went out to bid, the MCA, the Michigan Concrete Association, recommended a finishing process for cold weather, number one. And then two, for uh, if you wanted to put a sealer, which I'm not a big fan of doing a sealer, um, um, it doesn't last. Um, but the main issue is um that that cement, the cement powder in the mix is is code compliant. It is, it is not something that the contractor mixed, it is a supplier and it it it's still meet code today. Now, um, uh, the finishing is is funny, and then the uh cold weather, it's very sensitive to cold weather. The same mix uh in a warmer climate worked just fine. So for us, we're just going to, um, uh, and and if you look at the um um, uh, the actual RFP, I included copy of the MCA in the back of it to make sure that contractors are aware of what needs to be, um, um, how to finish the new uh cement if you use, if you use the Type L cement.
Mr. Deeb, I just want you to know, in the beginning, you said we're not doing with any winter sealer.
Well, as it gets colder, yeah, we're, we're gonna be careful, yeah.
So, m- my other question with uh, for A and G, and they can answer this, or maybe you can answer this. We started off with A- Angels Cement, which you praised.
Yes.
And then the, the contract was assigned, what's their relationship to Angels Cement? And how was it assigned, that nobody else had the opportunity to assume the contract?
No, we didn't rebid, we just brought it, reassigned it because the company was going out of, failing, I knew, I I'm not sure, is there anyone from A and G or cement?
Sure. Go for the podium, please.
And just state your name and what you are, are you, you're part of A and G, are you their legal counsel, whatever it may be.
Okay. Hi, uh, good evening, uh, cons- honorable counsel and everybody else here. Thanks for uh the opportunity to have A and G uh represent themselves here today. So my name is Nieves Longordo and I am, um, I do administrative work for Marco Andrade, who is the president of A and G. And uh, we have Mr. Garcia, who's a project manager for A and G. So, um, basically, A- Angels Contractor Cement, um, started the project and subcontracted A and G Construction to do uh concrete uh removal work there. And so when A and G uh was working there, uh, it looks like Angels Cement was unable to fulfill part of their uh contract, uh, I believe the owner was sick, I I'm not sure what the circumstances were, but then uh A and G had to step up and take over the contract to complete the work that he was already involved in.
Okay, my, my other question here, since you're up there an administrator, I have two follow up questions.
You're not the minister, she's a legislative, or you're.
Administrator.
So Marcos is my stepdad, I help him with some administrative work, um, so, yeah.
So my other question is, and maybe you can answer this. But last uh, last year when this happened, the issue, I was very vocal about Angels and when they took over. Angels employees, well, owner and their trucks and equipments were still out in the city doing work, when they assumed the contract. Now, my question is, for all the work that they did, and anything in front of Mr. Deeb, who's gonna carry on the liability to their work that they did?
That's an excellent question, and and I.
Because you guys assumed the full contract.
Right.
Correct?
Correct, and I, I'd be lying to you if I tried to answer that, I don't have a legal uh uh understanding to who would take that liability. Um, so I'm assuming that A and G would have to take responsibility uh of the contract if they assumed. I know that the contract was taken uh over around September, so I'm assuming he would assume responsibility as of the date that he took over the contract.
No, when you assume a contract, you're assuming that from day one when they started, not from September.
Okay.
So, but if that's here north there, that'd be a legal attorney, bank.
Okay, yeah, I'm.
Or not, or that we're just a legislative body.
Okay, yep, so.
Well, as it gets colder, yeah, we're we're gonna be careful, yeah.
So, m- my other question with uh for A and G, and they can answer this, or maybe you can answer this. We started off with A- Angels Cement, which you praised.
Yes.
And then the, the contract was assigned. What's their relationship to Angels Cement? And how was it assigned? And nobody else had the opportunity to assume the contract?
No, we didn't rebid. We just brought it, reassigned it because the company was going out of failing. And I I'm not sure, is there anyone from A and G or cement?
Sure.
And just state your name and what you are. Are you, you part of A and G? Are you their legal counsel, whatever it may be?
Okay. Hi, uh good evening, uh cons- honorable counsel and everybody else here. Thanks for uh the opportunity to have A and G uh represent themselves here today. So my name is Neves Longordo, and I am um, I do administrative work for Marco Andrade, who is the president of A and G. And uh we have Mr. Garcia, who's a project manager for A and G. So um basically, A- Angels contract or cement um started the project. And subcontracted A and G Construction to do uh concrete uh removal work there. And so when A and G uh was working there, uh it looks like Angels Cement was unable to. Fulfill part of their uh contract. Uh I believe the owner was sick. I I'm not sure what the circumstances were. But then uh A and G had to step up and take over the contract to complete the work that he was already involved in.
Okay, my, my other question here, since you're up there an administrator, I have two follow up questions.
You're not the minister, she's a legislative, or you're.
Administrator.
So Marcos is my stepdad. I help him with some administrative work. Um so, yeah.
So my other question is, and maybe you can answer this. But last uh, last year when this happened, the issue, I was very vocal about Angels and when they took over. Angels employees, well, owner, and their trucks and equipments were still out in the city doing work, when they assumed the contract. Now, my question is, for all the work that they did, and anything in front of Mister Deeb, who's gonna carry on the liability to their work that they did?
That's an excellent question, and and I.
Because you guys assumed the full contract.
Right.
Correct?
Correct. And I I'd be lying to you if I try to answer that. I don't have a legal um. Uh understanding to who would take that liability. Um so I'm assuming that A and G would have to take responsibility um of the contract if they assumed. I know that the contract was taken uh over around September, so I'm assuming he would assume responsibility as of the date that he took over the contract.
No, when you assume a contract, you're assuming it from day one when it started, not from September.
Okay.
So, but if that's here nor there, that'd be a legal attorney.
Okay, yeah, I'm.
Or not, or that we're just a legislative body.
Okay, yep. So, like I said, I, all I know is that we took over around.
How many other cities or municipalities have you folks done work for?
So, A and G, um if I could take a step back, um I know that at the last meeting, there were some um, you know. Concerns about uh A and G and what it actually does and the services that it offers. So, A and G initially started um a little bit of a broader scope, so it was named A and G Construction and Remodeling. Because Marcos and my mom have property and they were focusing on remodeling that. However, immediately they found out that that's not the, what they were gonna focus on, so they've really did one remodel job. And since then, they've been doing concrete removal, excavation, and pour, uh it's their, their specialty. And um they've done work in southeast Michi- uh southeast Michigan and Dearborn. One of the jobs locally that they did in Dearborn was off of Miller Road. They were subcontracted by Mark Anthony. So they've done quite a bit of subcontract work for other larger companies uh in the area. And so they removed concrete there and they prepped work in twenty twenty-one for Mark Anthony.
So, my question was, how many bids have you folks won, did actual municipal work? Like for the city of Dearborn Heights, or a neighboring city, or any city in Michigan?
I'm gonna need Marcos to help me with that one. So you, it was Dear, it was Dearborn? Okay, so directly it was Dear, the city of Dearborn Heights.
Just Dearborn Heights?
Yes, as a general, the main general contractor, correct?
Alright, thank you so much.
Yep.
Stand up there. Are you all set, Councilman?
Um no, with Mister Deeb, I have one more question.
You wanna show this up now or?
Uh no, we can hold on a bit on it. Um Mister Deeb, the cylinders that A and G or Angels had, do we have, do we have those? Do we have record of those?
The what?
From Angels Cement, the cylinders.
Sure.
We have them?
Yeah.
And who has those cylinders?
So I have the results. I don't keep the concrete cylinders, but I have the report.
Being tested, and they were coming in at a four or five thousand PSI.
Yes, yes.
Tested them.
Uh a testing company.
What testing company?
Uh, I don't recall. I think part of it was uh um, the hell's the name of the company? I forgot, but they do exist, yes. We do have some. In fact, we made the uh uh some payments to them, um. You know, uh uh I'm gonna uh comment on this and then come back to that.
Just the, just the follow up question, just to have it on the record, um. Um can you provide us with those test records and when they were tested, and when we paid, and when we paid them? And when was it paid? Do you have any idea?
When was it date wise?
Paid.
Paid. So uh after the issue, so it would probably be recently. Recent, so how recent? Few weeks, maybe?
So could you provide us with those records, if you don't mind? So who currently has the rest of the cylinders? That we, obviously, we paid a company for them.
Yes.
Who, 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 who holds them? Doesn't the city supposed to hold them somewhere?
For the company?
The company, I guess the testing lab, but but you want the actual concrete cylinders?
And what I'm asking is, who holds those con- concrete cylinders? We, I think in the last contract, we paid like fifty thousand dollars for testing. Of those cylinders and keep them on site. They keep them on site and take them. Who takes possession of them?
The testing company that crushed some, the lab that crushes the cylinders keeps them. We get the report. I don't get concrete cylinders, no one does. We get the report of the concrete cylinder.
So, the work from last year was just tested now?
Uh no, the work, okay. Concrete testing is done during the work uh to do it. That's.
Slump test.
That's, not the slump, no, no. Slump test is one test, the compressive strength is another test. And if we have any question, so before you open twenty-eight days, right, twenty-eight day strength, you could get it in ten, twelve days. We, they prove it by breaking a cylinder. That's, that's how it's done. You break cylinders, you got the uh compressive strength, you open the pavement.
So, are.
Now, the testing I referred to earlier was regarding the scaling. The scaling was way after we opened the pavement, like a year later. So it went through winter. Last year's concrete went through winter. We noticed the scaling. So we wanted to determine if that scaling is structural failure or um um uh cosmetic. So we had them core. That's not the, that's not quality testing, that's core. We, we paid to have them cord. We cored the pavement, took it to a a a testing lab, crushed it, and we got the reports. That's, that's not quality control, that's testing. So we've got that, that's the results, not the pavement, they crushed it. I mean.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman, are you all done?
Master.
I wanna go to Councilman Ma.
Thank you, Councilor. Mister Deeb, thank you for that presentation.
No problem.
Uh, we can go back to number one, you said traffic maintenance and control. What does that mean? Cause I see like a different variation, like uh in the bid.
No, no. So, oh, you're talking about bid prices now?
Yeah, like from nineteen to one twenty-five. So what does exactly mean?
So, so what it means is, so, alright. We assign this work based on location. So let's say, um um I know Councilman Saab loves uh Sheehan. So we have twelve sections on Sheehan. I have two sections on um Annapolis. So we go and market. That's how, we market with, you know, uh color paint and stuff, and then we assign the work to the contractor. Traffic control, meaning that you will put protection around it if it needs to be, like, you know, you have traffic, have the street. You open or you never close the street totally. And then um um barricade.
Okay.
So, um the the cost varies. Some contractors um do it themselves, some contractors use a sub and send them to like PK, you know, to go and put protection. Um and some people charge differently.
Yeah.
But they do vary, yes.
Thank you. Uh so going back to seven, eight, and nine, I need, I know you mentioned one of the companies, they didn't charge or maybe just a penny. And they put in a lump sum in one. So which one is that?
Bidder number two?
No, no, I know, but which, yeah, which, like you said, instead of having, instead of bidding for number seven, eight, and nine, like the earth, you know, the subgrade. And cut, undercutting and all the other stuff, you said they put it on one?
I highlighted that.
Correct, I see, so.
So you look at, you look at item number uh two.
Okay.
Item number three.
Uh huh.
That price includes seven, eight, and nine.
Number two and number three.
Yeah. So, the problem I have with that is, the reason I asked for them to be separated. So I pay only when I need to pay. So if I need twenty-one double A, I will pay for that. If I don't need it, I don't pay for it. But the way this is structured, I pay ninety-one dollars whether I need it or not.
Mm-hmm.
And I find that problematic.
I, I agree, that's problematic. And that's.
I, I'm, I'm not, you know.
I, I agree.
Instead of like bidding seven, eight, and nine separately, they only bid a penny each, and they include it in number two and three.
Thank you, Councilor, that was my question.
Uh Councilman Wenzel, you're next? Thank you, Councilman.
Um, a couple questions, um the two million eight hundred thousand. Um, does that include, do, do we get other kind of monies added to that, like for grants or? Or our budgets, is it just two million eight hundred thousand, or is it like four million or something?
No, so if, if you add, it's actually seven if you add major roads. But for local, this contract is local, and the local road is two million eight hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred. I know because I'm the administrator. So that's all we get for local road. Now, we do have um um a major road, that's a separate budget, four million something. For the major, that will be like Beach Daily, um um, you know, we have um. A list of thirty-nine and a half miles of major, that's separate.
Excuse me, but I, I, I just wanted, it, it, so we cannot get any more than two, two point eight million? That's like. Yeah.
Act fifty-one is the state money gasoline tax, that's what the state determines based on your population. Now, now, we did apply for grants um in twenty-six, in twenty twenty-six. I have an approval of three million dollars for um Cherry Hill. That is, that's federal, that's federal. This is the guaranteed Act fifty-one, that's your gasoline dollars.
That's the minimum we're gonna, yeah.
Pardon me?
That's the minimum we'll be able to spend on local roads.
That's, you don't have that, you don't have any dollars in your budget. City budget.
Got two million for Cherry Hill, so there is actually o- o- other monies out there.
I've also noticed, just so you know, working with the treasurer, I've also noticed that in prior year, we didn't structure our spending. For all of these um uh roads, um the way I like to. So I do have some money from prior years. That money doesn't expire, it's not a budget money. It's Act fifty-one, it's given to you, it goes to the bank account, and the treasurer invests it, and and so I'm working with the treasurer. I can draw some of that money.
Yeah.
If we need to.
Is Cherry Hill concerned local roads?
It's major.
Major?
Yes, and and that's why it qualified, it qualified. Actually, it's a major and and it's also a pain in the butt. Because it's shared, it's shared with other Inkster, and it's not the entire length. So Inkster shares with us from beat, from Middle Belt. Inkster Road to Beach Daily, and then Beach Daily to to uh Gully is a hundred percent.
So, okay, um now the testing of the cylinders, did that go off for bids, or how did we determine that company that we're using?
This is, this is part, no, this is part of this. So we included of number.
We pay for that though, right? We pay for the testing. The city does?
Yes, but all of these things, they can do it themselves or they can sub it, but they can't exceed the number they give me. So all these bid items are priced by the bidders. And when I receive an invoice, I hold them to those numbers. So they can only do, they can only bill me for this.
Alright, so then, they, they get the results, the contractors get the results, the city gets the results?
We get the results.
Okay, and I noticed that at some of the jobs, they take the cylinders off the job right away. Aren't they supposed to cure an environment that's that poor?
Um so there, different labs do them differently, uh but yes, they're supposed to cure, yes.
Yeah, they could take them in a warehouse somewhere where there's no elements that are not curing there. Um, what happens if there's like a, a, an act of God situation where they, they got everything compacted? Big section ready to pour, and next, and we get a washout. And washes, you know, all their, their stone up and stuff, they have to redo it. Where's that?
No, we'll have to fight with the contractor as it is to who pays, but yes.
Is that anywhere in the contract about who pays or something like that? Or vandalism, something that happens to.
We've had vandalism and and prior, uh we, we, we have. We've had vandalism. We also had rain. And and contractors absorb the um, the, the cost to repair.
Contractors do absorb costs?
As a matter of fact, um um I will share with you some of the uh pay invoices that we deducted money for. Co- for sections of pavement that didn't make a year. We exhibited cracks and we deducted the cost.
One, one, one last question. Uh do we allow the contractors or the, the concrete suppliers to use antifreeze in the, in the mix at all? You know, in cold weather?
So it's not really antifreeze. We have winter protection um items. Uh I didn't include that for two reasons in this contract. One is, I don't intend to do that in freezing weather. And then two, because of the type uh one L cement. Um I'm actually talking to the Michigan Concrete Association to see if, if there is a way for us in cold climate states. Not to use the one L, go back to the old cement and force contractors to use the old cement. They haven't agreed with me, they said, no, you can't. It's code approved and 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 and, you know, suppliers use it. So I can't hold the contractor who purchased the concrete from a supplier. I can't hold them liable to something the supplier is doing. But it is, it is code compliant.
It is.
So far, it's code compliant.
We can't specify in the, in the specs that we don't want that? I mean, I've heard some issues.
You're, you're going to increase the, the cost, because you'll have to find a supplier that does not use um uh one L. And then if he says he doesn't, you need to inspect it, right? So I need to pay someone to go and test that plant constantly to make sure one L cement. Now, one L is a little cheaper product, because it has limestone. Um my, my prior life was in testing, construction testing, and limestone is not um a desirable material. It doesn't meet the soundness test in, in cold weather. So if you put um um, you know, if you put magnesium sulfate. Two or three times, that, that stuff is gone, it disintegrates.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, okay. You know, I'm gonna say this again, I've said it before, price doesn't, price doesn't guarantee quality. Um when we go with the least expensive, I don't want to be redoing this in ten years. Look at Charles. I mean, a good example is I did some research. My subdivision, I'm sure most people know where I live. Um, it's in really good shape, and it was done around two thousand. And the company that did it is a number two bidder, back in the day. That's twenty-four years later. We don't get that out of most of our streets around here.
That's true.
I mean, I, I look at some of the other streets, I know, I know a lot of the streets in the city, and I travel it a lot, and some of them are horrible. And they've been redone a couple times since mine was. It's just, I, you know, I've, I've been in this city. For all my life, and the quality of roads has gotten worse.
I agree.
I mean, the new roads.
I agree.
And it, it's sad. Um this is a big contract, and for a new company who has no track record. I'm kind of leery of it. Um I was looking at, you, you said it, uh. Bidder number two is disqualified. I've been going over the contract. Why does bidder number one not include pages one, three, and four, which consist of the signature page? And there's an onsite bid, and the bid bond security is only signed as owner? That should make it valid right there. I mean, that's not a valid bid.
I went, um, these submittals went through our procurement department, I didn't evaluate those things, and they, they accepted them.
Because, I mean, I question the bid bond, if there's even a bond.
Yes.
I, there's.
Okay.
You know, I would look into that further.
Okay.
Check yourself.
Okay. Uh about the quality, uh Councilman, I'd just like to, to point out a few things that we are trying, this is a, a two-track record. Um uh one of the issues that we encountered is that um um, um some of the pavement that I removed um was only nine years old. And this is, um I know Councilman um um can attest to that. We found uh street pavement that's four inches thick, which is sad. This is not, that, that's, that's not what it was paid for. So I don't know who did the uh inspection, who did whatever. We're not doing it anymore. Uh and the second portion is, um a lot of the failures that I've noticed was uh due to lack of maintenance. So if you look at the joints, I don't know about your street, look at the joint, you know, the joints were supposed to be replaced every seven years, so they haven't been touched. So as, as um um when the pavement ages, the pavement's supposed to have a lifespan of about twenty-five to twenty-seven years or thirty. I'm, I'm looking at stuff, I'm looking at stuff that is less than ten, and it's failing, because we did not do the joint sealer. So we have um 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 part of our money that we're trying to stretch as much as possible is to put into maintenance. I have a new director at DPW, I'm working with the staff. Joint sealer, sealing is something that our people can do. Other, um other, and I meet with other cities all the time, because um they're, they're all doing it better than we are, um unfortunately. So, things like this, uh 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 penny uh for the, for the joint sealer is worth a lot. You know, you'll save it, but I'm, I'm forced to replace pavement that shouldn't be replaced.
Right.
It, it's just, it's just a lack of maintenance. I mean, I can tell you by Berwyn, if you just drive by Berwyn Center, look at the joints in the middle. It, 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 it's horrible. That was the reason it's failing, is the joint was not replaced in seven years. So now I have to replace concrete. You know, that's unfortunately the situation.
Guys, nothing from the audience, please.
Councilor Chair?
Um.
Was somebody disqualified?
Guys, nothing from the audience.
No, the ones who you disqualified.
Councilor Chair, was there, was there any, any uh bidder disqualified?
At this point?
Yeah.
We, no, no, all seven bids you have in front of you.
Cause I remember you said if, if.
Well, the issue with, with number two is what I just said about the cost. And and normally, normally, um I didn't disqualify them because they weren't the low bidder. But normally, when you, when you, when you have something like this, it is a problem for us, cause I'm, uh you know.
I'm not done.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Personally, I would like to see us if we have to do less of a project to do, you know, qual- do a quality project. That will last a long time, because ten years is not good. If we have to do a little less and get a quality. Company and it will last twenty-five years, it's well worth it in the long run.
I agree. I agree. I'm, 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 but again, so, so my biggest problem. Um and and I know the administration's working on that, is I like, when I build stuff, I like to turn them over to, to an entity within the city to maintain them. I don't do maintenance, right? So I, I turn them over to someone. I'm still trying to build this organization in a way so that I, I'm, you know. Look at the Beach Daily. So here's a case in point. You've got beautiful pavement. I have to turn over to someone and say, okay, now it's in your shop. To maintain, you know, um um uh do the joints, please, do the joints. Uh this is true for everything, though. I have the roofs. When was the last time we did roof maintenance? Never. So this is, this is, it, it's a, it's, it's a, you know, it's a cycle. We, we, we're, you have to build, you know, you have to have the organization to accommodate these things. I only build them, so, sorry.
Councilman, are you done this time? You know, you take a pause, and then you just look at me, so I assume you're done. It's like the third time you've done this, or you're not done, I'm sorry.
I'm done. I'll announce it from now on.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Wenzel?
Oh no, I just, um, I think that the statement wasn't accurate when uh Mister Deeb said that if we pick number two. Mr. Deeb said that if we pick number two and they're disqualified, we have to go with number three, we can go back to number one. Number three then, you said.
No, I mean, if you disqualify one and two, then, you know, low bidder three, that's that's.
Highest bidder.
You can go to the highest bidder, I mean, I I'm I'm making the recommendations to stay with the low.
I I just have a couple of questions. When I was looking at the contract, I was looking at the ex- the earth excavation, and I know we spoke about this.
Yep.
Um, whereas A and G is at a hundred and ninety thousand. And then the number two is only one cent, and I know you have an issue with that. Are they saying, I'm lumping everything in? Or at one point, what if A and G comes back and says, I know I said a hundred and ninety thousand. You know, we had to do, we had to do earth excavation a lot more, we might have to do, I I'm just giving an example. I know you're not in your head, but let's just say what it come like, hey, you know, we need actually twenty thousand for that.
Whereas the reason I break it down is when we get invoices, we stick to those numbers. So if I measure ten feet and 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 you 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 your bid was ten dollars, you're only gonna get a hundred dollars. I'm I'm just saying, cubic yard or cubic feet, whatever. So the unit prices, that's that's how we pay. And then and then the reason I'm having um um I'm being, you know, um, it's problematic for me is I don't always do replace the base, the base is not always replaced. I I know, Councilman Saab, I I'm with you. If it if it is in perfect condition, we 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 compact it and use it. If it is, if it is non-existent and I found bases, I found concrete in the city that was poured over top soil. It it is, it we have, and and next time I'll show you, I'll send you pictures. So we we remove it and now we have, we have a price to earth ex- to excavate to the right depth to put pavement, to put the twenty one double A compacted, and now I put new concrete and hopefully, and and I know it will last. I I can, you know, this is why we ask for these unit prices.
Council chair. I have a, I have a follow-up question. Is to put a base under any piece of concrete, whether it's older now, it's gotta be compacted and pulled. Because what I seen did a work they were doing last year, we have pictures here, we can put up on the projector. There was nothing in some areas that were pulled. And I mean, and if you're saying that's okay, you're the city engineer, but me as a resident, there's a reason why that's those specific streets and in that area are the way they are. And I I'm I'm for having a aggregate for every single piece that's removed it. You know, we have to have rebar, we have to have it, oh, we have to have it compacted, we have to have it inspected.
We are, we do.
But one thing we lacked at is is onsite transparency, we're having, you guys said every every person was there on every single slab, that wasn't true.
So I have one part-time uh uh person, that's all I have for all for this entire contract, plus the rest of the work that I do. So we tried to stretch it, and I mean, I I'm I'm with you. Now, i- i- is is that person going to be there twenty, twelve hours a day for the for the entire contract? Probably not. But but he's going to be there, and so what we're doing this going forward is every slab we remove, we're going to take pictures and document it so that when when you ask me about the base, it will be compacted and the base will be in place and the um uh it's not uh uh rebars, what we have is is yeah, we have, we have the um uh epoxy coated lane ties. So we have epoxy loaded uh uh coated lane tie, epoxy coated, not the non-coated, and they're at eighteen inches. So we embedded length, we'll take pictures of those going forward. But the problem is, again, I don't, I'm really trying not to um add, I don't have staff. I mean, my entire department is one part-time person, so twenty six hours.
So my follow-up to you is about the rods and epoxy, oh, that's that sounds great, but it wasn't getting done. We have, I have, we have pictures.
Okay.
And we had them remove a s- a few sections last year.
Okay.
So and I understand that you're a one-man uh department, but there's gotta be oversight in any contract we do. And every every order that's put in or every draw that's given or every payment we make, we, Councilman Ahmad has requested before from DPW, um, we want pictures sent to us for every single slab or section that's removed and verified. Although, everything that's put on the contract.
Okay.
I mean, look, I think, I don't think that's like part of that, knowing the fact that you're saying you're understaffed and you can't see everything. I mean, and the least they can do is at least photo, you know, son of.
We are, we will.
Because Mister Mister Deeb, and one more question I wanna, and I I I'm sorry, I don't wanna, there was a street where I engulfed you last year. I emailed you about it three times, contractor never ever went back and finished the site work. No, asphalt to curb, they did the curb. But the back, the back of the curbs were never, it was not done. And it's still not done.
The one off of Ford Road?
It's still not.
Councilman, I went there, it was done.
Okay.
It was done, I saw that, that's like a week after you sent me the email.
My second thing was is that you said that if we decide, you know, the council has the right to pick, choose or decide on what bid or what we decide to go with or who to choose. But you're saying that, you're probably saying that if we go with number two or number three, they're disqualified, what's gonna disqualify them?
I didn't get it.
How would they get disqualified?
Number two did not follow the specs, the 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 this price sheet. So they didn't give me what I wanted, so that's that's the ground for, you know.
But if the council accepts what they're doing for the price they're doing, you're gonna tell me they're still gonna be disqualified?
Yeah, I mean, they should have been disqualified from. From, yeah, it's disqualified, because then the the rest of them, the six other contractors are saying, why, why aren't we given the same?
Why are we using just this form of of the and the uh uh sheet, the form sheet that we have?
Cause that's the one we prefer. That's the one we, because I can pay for what I need. I pay for what I need, I don't pay for all the stuff, whether I need it or not, I pay for base if I need it. I pay for items when I use them. So any any of these, if I don't, this is worst-case scenario, if a section doesn't need those, I don't pay for them. That's that's the reason for that, we only pay for what we need.
Okay.
Yes. I'd like to thank Mister Deeb for all the detail he's gone to in in the presentation, he's really put a lot of effort into this. Uh there is one statement that bothers me a little bit, the thing about the penny bidding. Most of those items weren't anything we're doing. So Tom and I talked about that earlier. And it it may be a practice that some people use to win bids, as opposed to something that's needed.
I I just wanna say, like, keep in mind, one and two are not off by much, like two hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars. Not a big difference.
Councilwoman, I'd like to add to what you just said, and 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 that is so so playing the devil's advocate. So if I go with this company and say, look, I don't need, I'm gonna replace that section, but I don't need a base or a corrupt aggregate, I need a credit. Guess what my credit is? A penny, that's the bid price. My credit is a penny, that's not good. That's that's the reason why I I I I see it as a problem.
Okay, guys, look what I'm gonna do now.
Council chair. Yes. Just briefly, again, thank you, Mister Deeb, for coming, and this is a procedural issue, as I said before, we were discussing this. If, especially on a big bid like this, we jump into the bid process and try to, you know, relook it, we're we're gonna have problems. Um, I know some of our council members have more expertise in this area than I do, but I know Mister Deeb has a lot of expertise. That that's it, that's all I wanna say.
I'm gonna do Councilman Ahmad, and then we're gonna wrap this up, cause I wanna hear from the two. That's what I'd like to do, i- if they want to. I'd like to hear if any of the contractors wanna get up and speak, I know you you pointed at yourself a couple of times, just state your name and what company you're with. You don't gotta worry about staying in the city you resided. If you lived in Durban Heights, that'd be amazing.
Hey, Councilman, uh so I'm with A and G Construction, and one of the things that keeps uh.
What is, what is your name?
Milton, Milton Garcia, I was A and G Construction.
Okay.
And uh wanna keep to keep coming up is uh, we're A and G Construction and uh Councilman is talking about Angels. We were a subcontractor for them, and that was it. How how I was removing concrete, that was it. We assumed concrete from September. So if you go look at work from September on, you'll see the difference from their work to ours. So that's one of the things that you keep asking about leaning ties, yeah. He was doing horrible work, was maybe, I didn't see it, but if you go see our work, you'll see the difference are from brooming, edging, all that stuff, I've been doing this for eighteen years. Uh Marco brought me over this year, I was uh with Angel Iafredi. For sixteen years, I was a foreman for them for eight. So anything you guys wanna ask, go ahead, now is the perfect time to ask.
You said you used to work for Angel?
No, Angelo Iafredi. Yeah, so it's a big difference uh from Angels, A and G, we subcontracted them, our part was removing concrete and that was it. And after that, we assumed concrete September. So there should be where A and G started pouring concrete.
Exactly you did, I'm sorry. Why exactly you did for Angel last year before?
I didn't work for Angel.
Exactly you guys did for Angel, you said just uh.
Remove concrete.
Just remove.
Our subcontract was just removing concrete. Other than that, there was nothing.
Basically, Angel had had different subcontract.
Yeah, we had, we had, our subcontract was just concrete, he would go to a job, remove concrete, we wouldn't see what he would do, if he would put lane ties like uh Mister Saab was saying, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to tell you he did, if he did it, we can't. I can't speak, we have an order, so.
Councilwoman.
Okay, so you're saying that you removed the the concrete only in Durban Heights, you never poured any concrete here?
We poured after September.
Oh, after September, okay.
After they were, because he couldn't keep up with the work, so we took over, especially because he was having complaints his work, and we took over September. So if you go walk and look at the patches that we did from September, you will see the difference.
So Durban Heights is the only city you've worked in or township?
Yeah, we've, we subcontracted for Mark Anthony, we subcontracted for other companies. But this is, as a prime, this is a first uh. No, we did it September, we took over September. So that's why I keep keep saying, I don't know why we're involved with Angel, two separate companies, we just removed and that was it. And uh we watched, we have our trailer, like he was saying, we watched it, that was him, not us.
Okay, so just for the record, uh just Council Chair, just one second. A contract that you guys took over, you guys assumed and reassigned that contract. So that contract you guys took was from day one, whether if it was from January or from August thirty first. Everybody's responsible from day one to the end of that contract.
And that's no problem, because there there's, 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 there's a retainer that he has there that we have to use for his work that has in there, so there's no, there shouldn't be a problem for that. So that's one of the things I wanna keep separate, cause we keep getting Angel and A and G, so.
No, the thing is, is that after September, I actually, I was one of the people that was complaining heavily about Angel's cement.
Mm-hmm, and then we came in.
And then I walked, I I drove around, I got pictures here that I can put up. It was after September, I can get the dates and times, there was work. And again, it wasn't you, it was Angels people still working on those jobs, pouring some.
We actually have the first day we poured the patch, the first day we did a pour with you guys, Durban Heights. The contract might, we might have started in uh September, but we could have started a few weeks after, cause it goes by.
But if you look up here, I think Councilman Saab has some photos. Right?
I think, cause his uh, I don't know if you can disconnect for one second, Mister Deeb?
Yep.
You mind? No, you just disconnect from the.
I did.
No, you're still on.
Unplugged left.
You can see where the trauma really comes from here.
And so when I talk to Mister Deeb about being having aggregate, twenty one A A and all that under it, where are they on the pictures? And and then again, again, I'm not pointing fingers at you by any means, this, I'm not trying to insult you, I don't own neither party, man. I just want what's in the best for the best of the city. Well, you can go back to one of those uh where he was pouring concrete, Mister Councilman Ahmad, not this one, go back.
I'm just gonna show this uh, Councilman Saab, this is, I think they were dumping cement in the source. That's true, it needs to be repaired.
So go back to so here's one, for example, this is the slab they actually took out, but go back to the picture before the first one up top. Right, but again, you assume the contract.
Yeah, but uh I again. Two two separate things, when you said we're a subcontractor for them.
I I I again, reassigning a contract, we don't put terms on it here, we're gonna give you a break from this date. You take it for all the work they did, from the day one to the under the life of the contract.
And but you're, you're, again, you're assuming their work with us.
May I?
If you're gonna speak, you have to speak into the microphone, but I'm gonna go to Councilman Ahmad.
I just wanna clarify what Councilman Saab is saying, since you assumed the contract, so you have to warrant the job that he did. So any mistakes that he did, it's on you guys to take care of.
Yes, and.
So that's what, that's what he means.
And we, like we said, he, there's a retainer, there's always for that, that's why there's bond and all this stuff, for the same reason, stuff like this happens.
Okay.
So that's.
Can you go up to the first picture up there?
Council chair.
Right there, see that picture, Mister Deeb says that when we take out a lot of the concrete, the aggregate under it is good, all I see here is mud. And there's no ties in that se- section over there. That's brand-new concrete being poured.
Council chair. If if I may, um I I don't agree necessarily uh with automatically saying that how because you started project, you assume from the beginning to contract. There'll be terms, I don't know what the contract says, but if it if it says that they have to, but it could also say, no, they're not responsible. And if it does say they're not responsible, you can't hold them accountable. Uh and they're trying to explain to you that you're holding them for something that's not their project, and produce the contract. Let's look at it, let's see the terminology, and if they're in violation, obviously they'll be held accountable, and then the retainer agreement would be used to cover them.
Ex- exactly, that's that's what I'm saying, he says I take, as I was a subcontractor, I was never a con- I I was hired by Angels Cement to remove concrete, I was never hired by Durban Heights, I have no contract with you guys.
And and let me tell you something, sir, and I don't blame you on this, but really, the ball dropped, and and I hate to say this, but the ball dropped, cause we allowed anybody else to assume the contract, this should have went out for me, if he got sick, he wasn't doing a good job, stop the contract. Go back out for bid, make sure the job is being done right, we don't just subcontract, this is, we're talking millions of dollars. Millions and mil- we're talking mil- we're talking two point six million dollars here. Like, that's a lot of money, and I'm not saying like you're making two point six million dollars, but the city taxpayers are spending two point six million dollars. Hang on, Councilman, please, stay tuned then, guys. Um, so to me, like, I don't know much about what's happening with concrete, but looking here, this does not look compact, this does not look good, this is not something I would have ever seen pouring concrete, and Mister Deeb, uh I'm gonna tell you, as a city engineer with weight trim yourself, this is unacceptable. We, you know, we we paid a lot of money for these things and and.
I agree.
You know what's gonna happen over time? Water's gonna get into that, it's gonna pop up, I mean, I'm no engineer, but I can tell you, Earth Science one-on-one, Mister Cass's class, I learned that. Or it's gonna cave in. Um, that was, that was. He is. Yeah, so so I mean, to me, just learning things like that, I mean, uh that's that's not a good image. Um and so if I'm hearing here that another contract bidder is here to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna aggregate everything, and I'm not just gonna pour concrete over it, I could tell you at least from when my neighbor did it, cause I didn't do my concrete, but there was rocks everywhere, and then they poured the concrete. Here, I'm seeing no rocks, and then they're just pouring concrete. There's nothing from the audience, sir. Oh, I mean, I don't, I don't know, like, I mean, the councilwoman kinda said it too, like, she's had her thing done in the early two thousands and it still looks crisp. You go down Richardson, which was done a couple of years ago, maybe.
Yeah, the councilwoman said she has her, she got a uh subdivision done by her, the uh second low is better, okay, that's fine, but uh me, I've been doing this for eighty-plus years, uh there's no traffic, no heavy traffic as as these streets. The subdivision's not gonna get as heavy traffic as uh uh one of you guys' streets. Subdivision, you, we're gonna have two hundred people live there compared of.
She's trying to actual, she's just saying like her neighborhood.
Like one mile by one mile.
See, and uh there's, there could be, there's, there's a company that could pour concrete next, uh last year, and there's, now, there's companies that did it thirty years ago and it's still good. And it's, there is, not saying there's there's excuse for it, base and all that stuff, that's, that's no excuse for that, that's horrible. And but again, that's Angels Cement, I can't vouch for them, I can't do anything.
And I I also wanna say, like, I wanna refrain from everybody on the council framing against, you know, issue of season assist. We should not be, you know, slandering or saying any, we can say an opinion like, yeah, that's not a good job. We all have to refrain from saying anything that could potentially put us in litigation.
That's, that's, Council Chair, this is, this is taxpayer money, that we can go into litigation, they're defrauding the city.
Yeah, well, what I'm just saying, like, we can go to litigation for getting our, getting the right way. You can say, hey, we're gonna file a lawsuit, we have proof here, we don't wanna get into litigation for any type of slander, we we we, we don't wanna do that. We can say how we, you can be, you can be opinionated. We can say how we, we can be, you can be opinionated. I mean, do you have anything else to say, sir?
I mean.
I believe she's got something right there, she's about to stand up. Thank you.
Uh, just to close out, uh, some closing statements from A and G Construction, um, well. We were subcontracted and we, um, you know, based, we're willing to take full responsibility based on whatever the contract says. Uh, but I would like to just add that A and G has uh, Mr. Garcia with eighteen years of experience and Marcos, Mr. Andrade. With over thirty years of experience in the. I just wanna say that, you know, there's pictures that we passed out earlier of the equipment that A and G owns. Uh, a list of uh, equipment is on there with pictures, and then a, a union letter from Marcos, uh. It's showing how long he's been with the union as well. And so, you know, we feel that A and G has the capacity, the manpower, the equipment and the experience to successfully complete the project. And we're willing to make sure that we take the necessary pictures, make sure that all the necessary. Uh, procedures and specs are followed in this project, so again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
You.
Thank you.
How you doing, sir?
Good, how you doing?
Did you state your name and the company that you're with?
I'm Mario from Audio Construction. So.
From which company?
Audio.
Audio.
Second bidder.
Okay.
I worked here a long time ago, back in two thousand. And I ended up having problems when I was here, I had problems with people who wanted to get, uh, be paid off. And there was a lot of dirty business going on, I had a lot of things happen that I'm not gonna get into, but I, I had some re- retaliation. So we quit working after that, we didn't bid in Royal, uh, in Dearborn Heights anymore after that. Because I just, it wasn't worth it. So I bid this job, this job came out three different times this year. The first time, I don't know why it got thrown out, the second time we bid it, it got thrown out, this is the third time. I talked to Ali and I asked him, why? Why was it bid the second time, why were you rebidding it? And he said, because the bid dates were wrong. And it was an unfair to other contractors. I'm very well versed in contracts, there was no bad bid date, there was no misinformation. They, he just kept this job open so that somebody else could bid it, that he wanted to get in here, it's very obvious. So, that's what I have a problem with, I don't like corruption, I don't like people doing things like that. You had no, no basis for throwing these bids out three different times.
Were you the only bidder at the time?
I'm sorry?
Were you the only bidder at the time?
No, there was multiple bidders every single time, everybody wasted their time putting bids together for you guys, and they got thrown out. For no good reason.
Deep, do you know why you did that?
Exactly what I told him. So, the project was not bid three times, the project was, the first project was bid and awarded by DPW. And I told that to Mr. uh, Saab, it was awarded to a company and, and DPW is used in the same format. And it was awarded to a contractor, so that contract is for concrete repairs uh, due to water main breaks. That contract is, and it's in use today. Second time, um, we bid the project, the procurement, and I tried to explain to this gentleman on the phone. The procurement department asked me if they can change the document due date from uh, Thursday, which is the end of the work week for us. To Wednesday, so they can have time to do it, and I said, fine, in an email, and I can supply those emails. And so they did, they changed it on Bidnet, but did not change it on the document itself, the actual RFP was not changed, they changed it. So we had people coming in on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Uh, with bids, which was, we didn't open because it's not fair, because if you were supplying on Wednesday. Then the Thursday people were complaining, I was following the RFP and it says Thursday. So we had a discrepancy on the due date, and I already talked to our procurement guys, why did you not change it on both? But it was done already, and I was out of the country, so it wasn't fair to either one, we didn't open any of the bids, I didn't look at them. I just went ahead and, and, and reissued it, that's the only time it was reissued, once. And we have, we have, but so, so it wasn't fair.
Mr. Deep, but you know what else isn't fair, man?
Sure.
Like, I'm not saying you did, I take your word for thing, but, you know, when you, you stopped the first bid. You, you potentially could have opened those bids, seen what some came at, and, and like.
What would that do?
We should have accepted the bid from the first time and never went up for extra additional second bid.
So, so what happened to the people that came in on Thursday and they wanted to apply, you already opened on Wednesday? That's, that's the problem, and I.
Bids from Thursday, you can, you can prove that, you have more bids that showed up.
Yeah, by the ways, Marco, listen, let me tell you something here. I'm letting you, I know you're emotional and you're speaking up, but I, I want you to carry yourself in a professional manner as well, like. You know, there's, there's, here I can tell you right now, there's zero corruption happening, and I'm gonna say, Mr. Deep is not that type of person. I want us to refrain from even insinuating of that sub touch, please.
I'm saying I experienced it a long time.
Yeah. And, and I, I, yeah, that's okay, man, please, Mr. Mr. O, nothing from the audience, thank you.
So you can, you, you all can ask the procurement department exactly how it went, that's exactly, that's exactly.
I just think that, look, I'm gonna tell you, it's weird. It's weird.
I'm just saying, if it was, when they showed me two different dates, uh, it, it became, it became problematic. If you go with the bids on Thursday, then, you know, the people on Wednesdays are upset, because their, their numbers are known. I didn't wanna open any of them, I told them, I said, all the bids are out, we just read advertised. In addition to that, additional information came up, so we changed the price sheet and we added the uh, MCA, um, um, uh, bulletin. To make sure that, that bidders are aware of, so there's no, there's no corruption, no one is trying to pad the bids, it's.
Council chair?
Yep.
Were there any other bids submitted after that Wednesday?
No, they called in on Thursday to bring the bids, procurement said absolutely not, we closed it on Wednesday, and so they're upset.
So you did.
Councilman, the document says Thursday, the uh, um, uh, the bid on Bidnet says Wednesday. So the people that followed the document, which is when you download it, you download it, it's, it's RFP. So they're saying, look at the document, it says Thursday, and it does.
Just, excuse me, there was people that came in on Thursday?
They, they will not accept their bids.
There was though, there was.
Two.
Was, was it one of these companies that are currently bidding?
I, I don't know, because I'm not procurement, so they came in over to the procure, to the procurement, to the buyer, and the buyer said, I closed it on Wednesday. And he called me, I said, well, you know. It's, it's, it's a problem.
Did A and G also bid on this the first time?
I can't, I, I didn't open any of them.
Did you guys bid on it the first time?
So I, I, I didn't open any of them.
Glad, Marco.
So. My name is Mario. Uh, we got the bid results for, for the, from that bid, so I don't know how he doesn't have them, because they were opened, and we knew the prices, so. I, 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 yeah. Yeah, they were opened.
They were open.
Yes, they were.
I know, but they were open.
Opened them on Wednesday. So we have people coming in Thursday.
So when was the deadline?
Wednesday.
The deadline was Wednesday?
Wednesday, and it's on Bidnet, there's a timer in the corner that tells you how much time you have left to put your bid in. That's what you go by, I mean, that's, you're, you're putting those bids in on that service, on that platform. So I don't know how you, there would ever be any confusion on the dates.
The document itself says Thursday, the RFP, the, the RFP, the actual proposal, RFP did not change. It still says Thursday.
And, and I don't believe that, I, I don't, I don't believe that, because I have it, and it says Thursday. Mine says Wednesday, it's weird, mine says.
Do you have yours with you?
I think so, I might have supplied it to you guys in a bid package, along with a lot of other things.
I did see it here. Once the July tenth, twenty twenty four.
This says Bidnet, that's not the proposal. The proposal, the contract itself says Wednesday, has the same exact date on it, the same exact time. Contract itself is what you go by. So the contract itself is what you go by, Bidnet is the platform that you put it in, and it's got a timer on it, so. I don't know how that could have been confusing to anybody, other than. The bid got thrown out because somebody didn't get a bid in, that somebody wanted the bid to get in, that's the only way I could see it.
Look, I, I want you guys to know, uh, we're not making a decision, but it's a study question.
Sure.
But, I mean, I think, like, ultimately, this is a little weird, and I, I hate that this. You know, it's brought up here, but you know, we have to kind of hear things out sometimes, um, you know. I, I don't know the direction that this body is gonna go in, because there's gonna be a vote on September tenth. But, you know, assuming it's, you know, it's not A and G and it's, it's this company, you two work together, I feel it, there's, you know, there's tension there.
I, I mean. I can, I can personally, I don't know if he can.
You gotta carry yourself in a more wanting to workable relationship and.
I, I work with a lot of engineers, so, and these things happen quite often, actually.
Okay.
Um, I've been doing contracts for twenty eight years, so there's always some type of friction. I mean, if he was to punish me, I would, I would have a problem with it, if he would, but I mean, all my concrete's gonna have. Base on it, it's gonna have tie bars, it's gonna have rod in the curbs, it's gonna have curing compound. Matter of fact, the concrete that's peeling, it's a one L problem, I know all about it. We do not use a type one L cement, we use a T type cement, I'm one of the few contractors who can get it. There's one company that has it, they have ships that go to Turkey and bring it in, so, that's the material we're using. I have a two-year contract with that company, and that's what you'd be getting with us, because of that problem. So, and it costs us a little bit more money. But we do quality jobs, we're M dot contractors and we do a lot of these jobs for cities.
Council chair. Council chair, real quickly.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, can you ask A and G if they submitted their bid on or before July tenth, Wednesday? You did, uh, before the tenth?
Why isn't this bid on here then, in the bid chief? So you only bid the first con, the first, the second time, not the first time, correct?
It wasn't part of the second, usually.
I don't know, I didn't.
No, he was part of the second bid, not the first bid.
The first, yeah, the first one.
Okay, thank you.
So you said you, you bid on it?
Guys, did, did you have any closing remarks?
Uh, yeah, I, I was also, uh, I asked Ali a bunch of questions about line items that were missing, that I felt were missing in this contract. Um, I called him, talked to him, and then I also emailed him with a follow-up, he answered me, he told me to go ahead and put line items on the bid. Normally, when I ask these questions, they would be, uh, an addendum would be issued. And everybody would get the chance to add in a line item for ADA tile, or a percentage for the following year to continue with the contract. He didn't do that, so I went ahead and put it in there, because he said, go ahead and add a line item, now you seem to have a problem with that.
Because you're the only one out of seven.
No, there's another, there's another bidder who added something in there, I can show you.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, I have.
Well, you told them it was only me. But it's, there's actually another person.
Out of seven.
Doesn't matter, you said I was the only one. Who's this?
Required the sanitary mantel, this is this one.
It's another retundo.
Yeah, not the same issue.
Yeah, your, your bid is unbalanced, and that's why I put everything in one place, he's got, he's got items that don't match up. Anywhere in the contract, like, too, too much or too little of this and that, that's why I was like confused. I'm like, you don't need all this, but you need more of that, I put it all in my price, everything. To keep it simple, to keep my price, look at the other bids, they're a million dollars higher. A million dollars, and I can tell you, the word on the street is, is nobody wants to continue coming here and bidding on these projects, that they're just gonna keep getting thrown out. It, it's a lot of waste of time for us, and, and this is, you know, hopefully not a big waste of time for me, but. I felt, I, I felt I needed to stand up because of the things that have happened in the past.
I, well, first and foremost, I appreciate you coming over here and really, you know, look, it takes a lot of courage to come here and say, hey, I didn't want to bid. But I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna continue to fight that, me, I appreciate and I respect that. And, and secondly, it seems like Mr. Deep was nodding his head when he talked about the different type of product of, of concrete. Uh, you said you'd bring one in from Turkey or something?
Yeah, it's T one cement from.
Are you familiar with that, Mr. Deep? Would you think that's a really good, no, you say no?
I'm not a big fan of that.
It's, it's what's been being used from forever, this new stuff is the one L, that's failing. So I don't know how you could have that opinion, that doesn't make much sense, but.
Well, I mean, you're the concrete expert, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff in this contract that don't make a lot of sense, testing, the way he's doing it with cylinders. But, n- n- no testing company even knew how to break that apart like that. Normally, you hire a tester and they'll come and they'll test, they'll test your slump, your water, your air, all that stuff, and then they'll do a cylinder. And you're right, they'll leave it on site, and then they'll come and get it after seven days and, and then break it. Now we're asking them to just do a cylinder, they don't even know how to price that, everybody was confused on that.
Seven people submitted, six of them did.
Yeah, and they were a million dollars higher.
Doesn't matter, six of them did not question that, that.
No, because they, they priced it in.
You're the only one that questioned that, so.
Well, let me have my time, okay? Seven bag concrete, he's got, he's got line items with seven bag concrete, nobody you, M dot doesn't even use seven bag concrete anymore. It's brittle, it dries so fast, it only lasts like a year. Where would you put seven bag concrete? That doesn't even make any sense to me. I mean, there's a bunch of stuff in here that doesn't make sense, so I put my numbers in for the things, and I would, and I would argue not to use seven bag concrete. It's a bad product.
What else? Do you have any closing remarks? I want you to finish your, Mr. Deep, can you do me a favor and just maybe take a seat?
No, I just said, look at my references and, uh, you know. I didn't get to do a two and a half million dollar job my first one, it just didn't happen like that, fifty thousand, then a hundred, then a hundred and fifty. I don't know how anybody can jump to a two and a half million dollar job and never did it before. I mean, there's payroll, there's employees, there's all kinds of stuff that you have to prove yourself with a track record, that you can do that and you can handle it. We've done it, we've done it the hard way, so that's all I really have to say.
Thank you so much. Hey, uh, real quick, if you don't mind, step back up.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So for the added item that you added at the bottom of the, your bid, it says pricing may increase for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, is that for everything? Or for?
Usually, usually you get like, uh, so concrete goes up every year, I happen to have it locked in with concrete right now, I, I made this deal. With them, so more than likely, my price wouldn't go up.
Just for the concrete, what about the other stuff?
No, the other stuff usually doesn't change, it's concrete that's volatile, yeah.
And for the ADA tile, which is not included, you have an estimate, like how many do we need?
Yeah, I would give, um, I don't, and that's the whole problem with putting a, a price on it by the square foot, I mean, he's got. For that line item, he's got ten thousand square feet. Well, if you're only doing the bottom square, that's twenty five square feet, if you divide ten thousand by twenty five. Then this is not a road project anymore, this becomes a sidewalk ramp project, that requires engineering with slopes. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes into that, so with this big giant number here, I'm afraid to say. I'm gonna go ahead and, and do that with the tile included, there, I mean, my price would be, if I had to include the, the tile costs like three hundred and fifty dollars. Plus the square of concrete, if you'd break that down into a square foot price, it'd be like fifty bucks a square foot, I'll blow the bid. There's no way I'm gonna get this bid the way he put it together, nobody will.
What, what did, what did A and G have in the?
I think a dollar more than me, like twelve bucks, I was at eleven, plus my tile. But I haven't worked here before, they might know that you're not doing any ADAs. I don't know that.
But that includes the, the tile.
Those twelve dollars, you use eleven dollars, but you doesn't include tile.
No, but I'm assuming that they know that there's not gonna be many ADA corners.
What about the?
They'd be losing money.
Sorry, what about says minimum four per visit, is that for the, the, uh, testing?
Yeah, yeah, so, so they're gonna come in, they'll, they'll, they'll make four cylinders every single day. Yep, and, and I don't think you would even need more at four, you probably wouldn't even ask for four. They were just telling me for the hundred dollars, and that's the price I was given, I got nothing on that. They just don't wanna do more than four cylinders for that price. So, again, it was highly unusual the way this, some of these line items were put together.
Okay, any other council members for the gentleman?
So basically, you're hiring somebody, like a, like a company to, uh, do the testing? So basically, you're hiring somebody like a, like a company to, uh, do the testing?
Yes, yep, outside.
What about, uh, A and G? Are they, they're doing themselves or they?
No, we, we, almost, almost everyone hires, uh, some. Testing, testing companies, but the, um, um, nobody, nobody required the minimum number of tests, so they gave me a price what we asked for. And then about the unusual, uh, format, this is exactly taken from other contracts. We've used this format many times before, and it worked. We've never had issues.
What about the cement that he mentioned, the seven?
Yeah, I've, 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 yes. Yeah, it's, it's a Turkish cement. You're talking about.
No, 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 he said the one they should have been.
Oh, the seven bag? Yeah, we've used it before. It did not crumble. I've got this for the last three years and we, we, on occasions, we have used it. Um, and it, it hasn't, it hasn't failed.
So what is it used for?
Yeah. Seven, seven back mix, yes. We've used that before. We've used that on multiple occasions. We still do.
Anyone else? Now, I'm gonna open this up to the public. Um, you're gonna, I'm gonna give you three minutes. Please state your name. Think your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. Ray Muscat, Hat Block Street, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not a concrete guy, but what kind of cement do they use at airports, on runways? Does anybody know?
It changes all the time.
That's some good concrete.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, uh, you know, I, I've seen, you know, where and, and I believe, you know, I, and, and I go with Councilman Sob. We went, I think both of us went to a few places where they tore up concrete. There was nothing underneath it, and we're saying, wow, some places was two inches thick. And we've never had anybody really there watching. Now, when they did shehand, I know they had, uh, uh, two people there on site from, uh, Wade Trim, uh, constantly checking uh, depth and pitch and all of that stuff. They were there. In fact, I, I was on the phone with Vaughn from Wade Trim because uh, but the eyesight, it didn't look like we were getting what we were supposed to get. Uh, but we went out there and we measured it and it was right on its spot, so, um, I, I don't know anything about these companies, but you guys got a decision to make, and I think somewhere along the line, the city kinda screwed up on their on how they did this bid process and, um, we've seen that happen before.
How we have.
Okay, so, uh, I, I don't know how to fix it, so I'm glad you guys are there and not me anymore.
So I know you asked for an extra additional minute and a half.
I wanna suspend the rules. I wanna speak to the gentleman asking questions.
Or you can go through the council chair.
I want him to respond to my questions.
That's fine.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on.
Just make sure, ask all the questions and he can respond after.
Yeah, ask all your questions.
No, no, I want him to respond for every question. Stop my time, it's, and two thousand, did you do work in Dearborn Heights, sir? Do you know what street did you do it on?
Uh, was it neighborhood north of Warren and between Telegraph and Beach Daily?
Does anybody has a house there? Oh, Maxwell, can you please answer us?
Yes, I do have a house there. I do have a house in that subdivision.
Uh, the concrete, is it peeling out?
No.
How good is the concrete?
It's, it's pretty good. I ride my bike in the neighborhood.
Sir, it's been there for twenty-four years?
Yes.
So, a company that's done work twenty-four years ago, and he told you that it was corrupt in the city of Dearborn Heights? Guys, it was corrupt. Now, sir, these people that are sitting on council over here, they're not corrupt. They know what's going on. They're not stupid. Very simple. The guy said they put the bids out three times. Now, why do we need subcontractors? Sir, do you have any subcontractors, sir?
Would only be for testing.
What about the pouring cement?
Nope.
What about breaking cement?
We do everything.
So why do we need subcontractors, Mr. Sob? You rather have a company be responsible so they won't put the burden on the subcontractor? Do you know why people get subcontractors? To put the burden on the subcontractor. And then who takes the liability is the city. This guy's done work, bro. Instead of we wasting time, suspend the rules right now, you know what to do? Take road call and give this guy the contract. I didn't get paid nothing from this guy. I don't even know who he is. When I hear somebody done work twenty-four years ago, that's a no-brainer, very no-brainer. We're wasting time. Actually, I, I gotta be somewhere. But I came here because the lady was, came over here and said, I just want transparency. He should leave here with some transparency, feeling like there's no corruption in this city. It's sad that we have to come here and point the fingers. Was there corruption? I don't know, but three times I'm dead, and then Mr. Deep came over here trying to attack me last time. If he can't work with his gentlemen, he can resign. Because at the end of the day, we need somebody to fix the streets and not fix them twice, three times, twenty-four years. I can't believe this. Listen, I've never seen somebody say that. For Ms. Maxwell to say that, I would like to go and take pictures of the place over there. Can you please take pictures and submit them next time to the city council if you don't approve it today? No, this is not a joke. This is not a joke. This guy came here and he's tired of the corruption. He stopped bidding here because what's it called? Do you guys wanna be the people of be, being corrupt? Listen, guys, three times something goes out for bid, there's something fishy. Listen, I'm not stupid. I'm not dumb. When a guy tries to attack me and tells me that I get paid from that lady over there, that means there's something wrong. Something is wrong. He tried to attack me because I'm telling the truth. She, she answered your question. The work that he has done twenty-four years ago and two thousand. So what, when did, when did you stop bidding here?
Right after that year.
Wow, after twenty-four years, a guy comes and says, hey, let me give these guys a new shot. There's new councilmen. There's a new mayor, new administration. Show them some love. The guy said it to you. I don't vote, I don't, I, I continue not to come here because of the corruption. So if you cannot get it, I don't know what to tell you. It's, it's, that's it. It's very clear, Mr. Baydun. No, this is a hot subject because I'm tired of going around to cities and what are we waiting for? For the feds to come in and do our indictment? Because I guarantee, and put this on the record, the feds will be caught because this was on, on bids three times. This is, this is, this, something's wrong here. I'm not pointing fingers, but hey, it's, it's, it's blunt. I want you to look up this guy's contract twenty-four years ago and do your homework. Guys, give the guy a chance, come to bed, come back. And then every time we look at, at the work, we don't need to bring it outside. What's it called? Whoever does the work best, twenty-eight years, God. Hey, I'm gonna call this guy if I need to do my driving. I'll be straightforward with you. Time's up. Make the right decision, Mr. Baydun, today. Vote on this.
There's no vote today, sir, beyond the September tenth meeting.
September tenth, but you know.
Thank you. We're at a study session. Any other members from the public? Uh, well, I'm gonna go to the public real quick.
Okay.
Then I'll, I'll come back. You go ahead, Mr. Abdulhaq. Please say, sir, hi, thank you. I think from the audience. Hello, so you got three minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Everyone, Zohair Abdulhaq, three five four Rosemary Dearborn Heights. Everybody knows my address. The rational things should have been done by the administration when they made a mistake on the date of the bid. Any rational person would have accepted the bids on Wednesday and Thursday and opened them on Thursday and accepted the one which is qualified. That would be the clean way, the best way and the rational way. The city made a mistake. They should own the mistake because the time for these people to make the bid and submit it cost them money, cost them time. It's not free because they have people get paid to do those bids. Uh, second thing, uh, Mr. Deep saying he's the only one in the department. If he needs assistance, I suggest maybe the administration should, uh, supply him with some people who can help him to do the job which should be done properly. And we can use the people in the DPW. I believe there is a superintendent for the uh, major streets and for the local streets. Those people can be used by Mr. Deep. And they can do the, you know, some of the job because I believe they are qualified. Uh, third thing, I know you guys are smart. You can see what's right, what's wrong. And I know all of you are honest people. I sat with you. And I know none of you has any interest in this contract one way or another. Do the right decision, even if it is higher than the lowest bidder. It had happened before, and we have waved so many times mistakes, bidders made on their bids and accepted their bids, and I can tell you at least four or five incidents where the people bid and they did not meet all the criterias, but they got accepted and they got the bids. So please, make the right decision, because when I drive on Wilson and I see a street which is less than ten years cracking in every place, and it needs to be redone, we should be very careful and make sure that we use the right material, even if it is more expensive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ha.
How you doing, Vince?
You talk about.
State your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. Keep in mind, guys, we still have a meeting.
Hi, Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street. I was up here before during, um, one of the council study sessions regarding, uh, the budget and employing people stuff, and I asked you once before, do we have a purchase agent? Nobody knew the answer to that back then either.
No, Vince, we don't have one.
Okay.
Thank you, that's the answer. We don't.
So why don't we have a purchasing agent so that Mr. Dean and any other department head could come forward and say, this is what I need, here's my specs, send it out for bid. Let the purchasing agent do the job. Put it out there. It comes back to the purchasing agent, and according to the city charter, I do believe all the bids are supposed to be open in public.
There's nothing from the audience.
So, the next thing I suggest you guys do is hire a purchasing agent.
Thank you.
And a purchasing department.
Thank you, Vince. Anybody else from the public? Go ahead, I'm gonna give you.
I just want, one last thing.
Yep.
Um, the, uh, RFP, that's it. So it's Wednesday, the tenth.
Yeah, you said that.
Yeah, I just want, he, he said it didn't, and I just wanted to, I think you guys. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Anyone else? If not, we're gonna end this. What's that?
Okay, cause you moved from there to there. I thought you were waiting in line.
Oh, excuse me, we're gonna go ahead and take a quick three-minute recess to start our, our regular meeting.
Recording stopped.
Okay. Recording in progress.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here today. Uh, we are moving to a special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council is called to order today at six fifty six P M. Uh, Madam Clerk, Madam Deputy Clerk, will you please take roll call?
Hassan Ahmad.
Present.
Moby Dune.
Present.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Present.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
Tom Wenzel.
Here. We're split down the middle with two presidents in here, huh?
Council Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much, uh, Madam Deputy. Clerk. Uh, next up, we have the pledge of allegiance. We're gonna have our very own former council chair pro time. Councilman Muscat, who loves me on social media, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Former councilman, as always, my councilman, thank you. Georgia. We're gonna do a moment of silence for those children that lost their lives at. Thank you, councilman. And also for the teacher. You know, that's, that's devastating. It really is.
Every year.
I agree, you know, life is just passing by. Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the amended uh, agenda for the special meeting of September fifth, two thousand twenty four is submitted.
Second motion made by Councilman. Saab, second by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Councilman Ahmad. Goodbye. There's no approval in the minutes. Next up, we have public hearing and comments on agenda items only. Yes, sir. Please state your name, the city residing and the street that you live on. You got two minutes. Ray Muscat, Havelock Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you, sir.
Question, with this reduction of the city budget, which is. Commonly known, we can do, I shouldn't say we, you guys could do that, cause it's.
You as well.
Uh, i- i- it's a living, breathing document. Uh, how are you going to do this? Is this going to be a line by line, going through each line item? And eliminating. How much money we need to balance this, or is it already made up of what you're gonna do?
That's a great question. This is Councilman Saab's resolution, so I believe he's either gonna go line item by line or explain to us as to where he's coming up with his numbers. I know at the budget hearing meeting, I don't know if you remember that one, it was all over the social media and we had all the. Uh, everybody here, he requested it and we said. Uh, if you wanna have these removed, that was from where? So I'm, I'm sure he's coming prepared today.
Okay, I, because, you know, uh, th- there's always word on the street, always. Uh, there's nothing you can do about it. And I, I'm hoping the word on the street isn't correct. Because I posted certain things on social media about what I heard on the street.
Yeah.
Now, if we don't, you know, we cut. We cut back so much money where people lose their jobs, which I'm not in favor of. And, and we just had a study session here where uh, an engineer may be going down to part time. We can't. We can't afford to do that either. So i- i- to me, if you guys wanna seriously think about eliminating. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the budget, you look at your very own budget. Right along with your cell phones and things of like that nature and tell the people that you're willing to give up some of this money. Okay, because if you don't give up some of that, so fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars is ludicrous. When I was a councilman, what we have, three thousand dollars? Okay? In our, i- i- in our legal budget? Okay? And that was it. And we never had cell phones, even though I wanted a cell phone. But if you're gonna cut seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a cell phone is not needed. Just think about that. It's not needed when there's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be cut. Just think about that and everybody else is watching. Have a good day.
Uh, real quick, I'm gonna just have a few, just a few things, uh, councilmen. Uh, um, just keep in mind a few things. Uh, legally speaking, for protecting this legislative body and you know it firsthand. We get phone calls nonstop and when you get a phone call on your phone. The second you start talking city business, that phone is now optioned to be confiscated by the police department. It can be FOIA. And so for the protection and ethically speaking, because I actually had this conversation with, I'll tell you my great friend Dave Kinesik. And I said, you know, you know, one of the things that I read on social media, just so happened to be you. I said, what do you think about that? Cause personally, you know, I, I don't really care to give up my phone. They can take it. I don't. My personal phone or the other phone. I got nothing to hide, right? And he said, well, well, you know, I work for, you know, the county, I work for, you know, the state and, and each one of my departments, I have to have a phone for my own protection. Ethically, you should all have a phone, including the mayor, the treasurer and the clerk, any elected official for that purpose reason. So. That, that is probably the reason why, but I mean, really, I think in the phones, I think we spent, what, fourteen thousand dollars or twenty four thousand dollars for the entire year.
Uh, exactly for city council.
Not even, yeah, it was, it was like very, very little. The phones were free because we, we opt in with, I think, Immobile or something. But we didn't pay for any of the phones. We pay our servicing for the year. Um, and that really is.
So you gotta stand on your fence and hold your legs up like this to get reception?
You're right, cause if had we had, uh, you know, Verizon, it probably would have been better, but to suck into your second point, Ray. And I'm gonna tell you this. You on council in support. Of special legal counsel where the, where the Third Circuit Court ruled in support of your favor. And your second motion, cause it was actually the, you know.
Council too.
Yeah, i- it was, it was your second that allowed for special legal counsel, which you guys set aside money for. And it was also your second for the, for the audit that you guys wanted to also do, which we spent. Tons and thousands and thousands of dollars, which I'm gonna tell you for the record. Is a well over a hundred thousand dollars on each year, which I will also show you, uh, if you want. Well over a hundred thousand dollars.
I never seen those, I never seen those bills.
Yeah, well, I want you to know, well over a hundred thousand and, and, and me and the clerk have spoken on those, so I want you to know. And I wanna take back the hundred thousand dollars that were talked about on social media. Fifty thousand dollars was assigned for last year, which was zero dollars was spent towards legal counsel, which went back into the general ledger. We set aside a hundred thousand, consuming the old fifty thousand, put there and saying, in case you have to pay any bank bills, but the agreement we made with special legal counsel was. Once we go to federal court, when the judge gives us a ruling. We will see it. There's been really, there's been very little spot on this.
Okay, so let me ask you a question.
Yes.
If no bills have been submitted here, how are they getting paid?
You, you, they haven't gotten paid. They're not, they're, they're, they've, they've done no work.
Well.
We're waiting on a judge's.
A lot of work. Your, your, your count, your, 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 your attorney was here working as your attorney here.
Special legal counsel has come here a couple times, but has not given us a bill because I'm gonna tell you, what do you come for? An hour?
Yeah, but he said that he was working as your co- and so he's not charging, so as pro bono?
I, I'm, he has not given us a bill at this, at this point.
So I gotta find out what the quit pro quo is on that.
Correct, and there's no quit pro quo pro because we're not.
If somebody's not gonna do something for free.
Yeah, I, I can tell you right now. You know, when you say things like that, again, you're insinuating that we're doing something, oh, what are you guys doing?
I'm not saying what you, you, you.
Correct.
I'm not saying that you're, you're, but somewhere along the line, somebody's gonna say, I did this, you owe me.
Yeah, you know what that would be? That would be illegal. But until somebody does that, and until you can show proof somebody has done that, we shouldn't be shedding light on something that has never happened. If it doesn't happen and we say it and it's just like, we're causing all this like, th- this fear in people's minds. That there is a, a quit pro quo that's gonna happen.
But again, don't forget. The Circuit Court also said that we had to go through corporation counsel to hire that other attorney. I don't know if this was done this time.
Well, everything we did was properly as, as.
I'm not, I'm not gonna get in, into that, but all I'm saying, even if it's fifty thousand dollars, it's a lot of money.
You're right.
When it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a lot of money.
But zero dollars with that fifty thousand.
I don't stop. I don't care because there's positions.
Well, you do care because you spoke about it.
But hang on a minute, because we know in the budget, you budget for X amount of policemen. And so you put in that kind of money, even though their policemen aren't there, you don't take that money out of there.
Yes, it goes back into the general ledger.
I understand, but you don't take it away that year. You never have and you never will, okay?
No, it's a bottom line.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ray. I'm gonna go with Councilman Saab first, Councilman Ahmad, actually, I'll go with Councilwoman, then Councilman Ahmad.
So, Council Chair, just to Mr. Muscat, uh, you said you posted and you heard some stuff on social media. And what was that? Can you please? Yes, please. Yes, please. Because I'm not aware of uh, of such information.
This, this is the part that upsets me, because I've never been a deal maker. Never once did I make a deal.
What, I, I, I.
I'm just saying, I never made a deal, but when I hear on social media, or not just social media, when I hear from the general public. That a job in the mayor's office is gonna be discontinued. The city engineer is gonna be cut, yeah, at a part time. Uh, now I do know something with Plant Moran and Wade Trim may be cut back. To me, if all of that is true. I'm just saying if, if it's true, it's, your minds are already made up. You're not going line.
I, I, I have no idea where you're bringing that. I'm bringing an engineer to a hard time.
I'm just saying of what the, the squawk on the street is.
To be honest with you, hold on one second. Sorry, Kyle, Council Chair. My whole purpose of the amendments, I'm trying to make and lower the budget is to actually hire people in the city for help.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing.
So whoever is giving you such false cowardly information is false, a- and the mayor's office has three positions.
Correct.
One of them is a floater that they took away from. The treasurer's office, the clerk's office around, that's gone, but why does he have three? No other department has them.
He's, but the clerk, the mayor's office had, has had two or three people there for a long time.
For what?
Doesn't have any.
Presidential election.
I'm, I'm just saying, the squawk on the street is what it is.
It's, it's.
Now, you guys have to step up and show us.
And, and, and just.
Wait, hang on a second, and you're gonna have to do it the right way, go line by line, just like you did in April.
That's exactly what I'm doing here. And just for the record, as for the statement, the false statement that was put on that group this morning. Just for somebody saying, I called somebody and said the effing, or whatever it was that was posted, that was completely false.
Oh, you, you said what?
That somebody put on it that I called a secretary and told her, you're gonna effing lose your job.
I don't know anything about that.
Talking about.
No, no.
So actually, I was sent an email to that young, uh, female that works in the mayor's office.
That I don't.
He actually called, reached, emailed us on Saturday and she actually reached out to me. And no way, no form, way, shape or form, any of that conversation happened that I cursed her or anything. I had a, had the conversation with her. But uh, this is something that's false.
I just wanted, I just.
Misinformation. And all this is, is, and re- really, the mayor's office has three part time positions. And on no other department, uh, what they took, uh, during the budget, every one of those part time positions away. Why do we have three in one office?
This is for you guys to figure out, go line by.
And this is exact.
All, i- i- and you're.
And then, and then.
And you're entitled to do that.
Mr. Muscat, and, and I respect your, your voice and everything. And again. We, uh, during the budget season, uh, when we were going through the budget, item by item. Um, we asked the police department multiple times. Do we have enough officers? They said yes. Do we have enough dispatchers? They said yes. The current word around the streets that we defunded the police department, so I'm asking this body and council chair. Hold on a second, to actually put a study session together where I'd like to bring our comptroller, Plant Moran. And everybody back and I wanna open up the books for the police department, cause I wanna see where we defunded the police department. Because as of yesterday. It was made in front of multiple people that we defunded the police department and, and to this day, I still can't figure out.
Well, that, that, that's not the.
Yeah, and I'm just saying. Um, and, and, and I'm just putting on the record that.
We get to the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I, I wanna have.
Knocking on your door if you defunded the police.
I would never.
Okay?
Um. Just so the misinformation here online is false. All I'm trying to do is.
You guys.
We're, we're spending a million dollars on something you guys approved for a hundred thousand dollars. And I wanna bring it in house, get more, the comptroller needs an assistant. Um, the treasurer's office.
There's a lot of things that are.
Mr. Dean needs an assistant.
A lot of things that are good. I just wanna go line by line.
And we will, and this is what.
Well, hang on, hang on, Councilman, former, Ray, you're the man. I love you. You know how much I love you. But we have to hold off right now.
Okay.
Uh, we, we, we are on agenda item.
Well, okay, you've spoken agenda items.
Council member, your address, so I can bring you that. I am, I'm, we're, we're gonna, me and Andrew are gonna come over and see you too. Uh, I'm gonna go over with the councilwoman next. Thanks, Ray.
Hey, um, well, first of all, I do think it does look like we keep defunding things and really that's not what we wanna do. For instance, number one, the Wade Trim. Uh, if we take away a hundred fifty thousand, we have city projects right now that are in need of having things done. And that money has to be spent to finish them. And item number two, Plant Moran, uh, we have over forty accounts. And until those are corrected, there are issues and money has to be spent. Number three, the mayor's office, eliminate the part time position. The answer to some of your questions, we had two ladies that each had babies, so they had time off. After that, so we had to have additional people be there in the office. You, you can't walk in and have nobody, but maybe the mayor there, you have to have some help. So that, that happened this year. And then for the legal fees. Um. The outside council.
Councilwoman, you know, we're running agenda items. You're speaking already about the actual item.
Yeah, I am.
See that for when we open it up to discussion?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
That's all right.
Speaking at agenda items, which is for the public right now. So, so councilman, I'm gonna ask you not to, are you speaking on agenda items?
No, I just wanted to put on record about the phones that said. I pulled in, I pulled the record and it's forty two dollars for each council member a month.
Okay, so, yeah. But they can take my, I'll pay my forty two dollars gladly. Uh, please state your name, the city residing and the street that you, actually get my phone back. I don't want, I don't. Take my phone.
Okay, Zohair Abdul Khan, three five four Rosemary. Uh, I know, uh, the city council had no intention whatsoever to defund the police. And I personally put forward the motion to eliminate two jobs, the directors. And nothing was against the directors for their quality or they had. The whole intention was about the process to be followed. That's, that's. Th- that's the only thing, you know, we have in mind that we trying to force the administration to follow the charter, to follow Act seventy eight. And to follow the law, simple and easy. He can bring anybody he wants because he is the executive of the city. Now, my suggestion to you, if you're going to take money away from Wade Trim or whoever ever. I like you to invest this money. And training our people or renew people to do that job fr- within the house. So we don't have to spend in the long run, millions of dollars on things we can do for a lot cheaper. So, advice to you, please, if you're taking money away, put it on the side and do. Put it into training for people so they can do it in-house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh, oh, we got one on Zoom. Madam Clerk, please unmute Mr. Oon. Mr. Oon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
He did ask for an additional minute on this meeting part two, so, and for public comments as well, so. He's got three minutes here, and he's got four minutes, uh, closing remarks. Go ahead, Mr. Oon.
Sorry, guys, I got hungry, I came to talk about, anyways. The resolution that Mr. Saab put in to eliminate the position, just to let you guys know, that position's illegal. So basically, if Mr. Saab takes it off, and the mayor puts it back in, that position becomes legally. So, that position that Mr. Saab is putting in and taking away. If somebody wants to come and they qualify for that position, the mayor can put their position, and nobody's gonna sit there and say something about it because you guys will vote on it, am I correct?
No, you're wrong.
Then what, how, how's it working then? What, what is this, taking it off completely? And the mayor cannot put, come on, we're gonna fill this position up?
I mean, I'm not gonna speak on this because there's an injunction, and I won't say too much.
Well, I'd like to suspend the rules to amend, to amend it.
Mr. Cash.
No, I'm being serious, I'm, I'm, I'm asking to suspend the rules, put the motion on the floor, to amend Mr. Saab's resolution. Okay, and then put the resolution to amend it where the mayor can bring it back if somebody else qualifies. That's my amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Oon, we can have that discussion when that time comes up.
Well, you're gonna vote on it today, aren't you?
Yeah, and we'll have that discussion, so we'll, we'll, will that be duly noted?
That duly noted, that this thing can be brought up. If you don't want me to suspend the rules, as long as you put it, that the mayor can amend, that we can amend it and put a position to fill a position for somebody, that's no problem. I agree to it. Other than that, I'm not, this position, if it's eliminated, and you bring somebody, and you need somebody maybe.
Come back for the council.
Or go back in front of council, am I correct?
Correct.
Why, why'd you say, why'd you tell me that that's not how it is? So you're putting the amendment in there right now?
It's already in there, Mr. Oon.
That's all I was asking, you sure said yes, why are you gonna go back and forth with me? I'm trying to eat my taco, but you're standing there going back and forth.
Are you all done here?
Hey, more, it's not halal, if you want some, I'll bring you some. All right, that's where I said hi, bye, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Oon. Next up, we have our Chief of Staff, Mariana Hernandez, are you speaking as the Chief of Staff? Are you speaking as a resident?
Good afternoon, I am speaking as the Chief of Staff, and, um, I just wanted to mention that there seems to be a lot of confusion with regards to the part-time positions in the mayor's office. We've always had part-timers there, um. It was unfortunate that I couldn't be there today, I wish that it had been notified to, to the administration and the controller that these issues were gonna be discussed, uh, but just for clarification, um, the salary last year for part-time positions, and it doesn't matter how many positions we have, it is a part-time position, it's fifty-six thousand five hundred. That amount was already cut this year to twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty, and I do recommend that you do not take that position away. Because as Ms. Brier mentioned, and everybody knows, I did just have a baby, so we have been using that part-time position more so this year than we ever have in the past. Uh, but again, we had already made a cut, a significant cut into that part-time position. My recommendation would be, if you really wanna cut part-time hours from people, then cut two thousand from all the part-timers in the city. Not specifically the mayor's department, that way we can try to do some coverage in all of the departments, rather than take one full position away.
Thank you, Mariana. Any other discussions on agenda items, Oon? Seeing none, we can move on. Uh, reports from city officials, none, petition from citizens, none, ordinance and resolutions, Councilman Saab's resolution amendment to a budget to address the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar reduction discussed at the budget hearing. Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
Um, filed a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the resolution regarding amendments to the budget to address the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar reduction discussed at the budget hearing, and I, uh, just to, for record and disclosure, we're gonna go this item by item, and discuss item by item on this motion, and decide what we wanna do, item, line, item by.
Can you read the one, two, five real quick?
Yes, uh, number one would be Wade Trim to amend and reduce the budget allocation by a hundred and fifty thousand. Number two would be Plant Moran, amend and reduce the budget allocation by a hundred and twenty thousand, number three. Uh, mayor's office eliminate the ti- eliminate the ti- uh, part-time position, uh, number four. Legal fees, amend and reduce the budget by corporation councils, outside council by two seventy-five thousand. Uh, number five, director of operation, to budget, uh, uh, the, uh, to the police department to budget and remove this vacant position from the budget, but the funds coming back to the general funds. The mayor may bring back this position if needed in the future with a qualified person with council's approval. The mayor is not to introduce any new position without the council's approval, that currently is not part of Act seventy-eight, but I wanted to amend that and remove, uh, the last sentence on that where it says the act part of Act seventy-eight. And these adjustments are necessary due to the administration's lack of action addressing the budgetary concerns previously raised and voted by this. Uh, voted on by the Dearborn Heights City Council's outline eleven eight.
Motion made by Councilman Saab.
Support for discussion.
Supported by Councilman Ahmad.
Yes, Council Chair. I put these items on for discussion, um, you know, it would have been better to actually go, uh, different resolutions, but it was just to make it shorter. Um, you know, with Wade Trim and Plant Moran, it's, uh, we have huge expenses with them every year, and my goal is to reduce, uh, their, their presence in the city by hiring people in the city. By hiring people to do work directly under Mr. Deeb or our controller Shannon, or have people in, in the, that we can reach out to anytime and have access to them here, train these people, where we'd be saving money for, on the residents. This is not to just throw numbers, it's just that really the amount of money we spend, um, every year is just ridiculous. Where Mr. Deeb can have another engineer in, in, in his department, or have a supervisor in his department. Where if we're taking that money back, it's, it's being used in the city, somebody in-house trained, that if Mr. Deeb is on vacation, there's somebody to cover him. And I'm not saying that we're not gonna use Wade Trim on projects or C S O, we need consultant firms, but to reduce, uh, their presence and us handling everything to Wade Trim, I think our controller is doing a phenomenal job, but she does need assistance. Um, and so that's where I bring these items to, to the body, that our goal is to bring more in-house into the city, instead of contracting everything out, and that's where our, most of our money, residents, taxpayer money is going. Keep it in-house, train people, educate people, put people in positions that can help. A department shouldn't have one person, we shouldn't have one person leading in, four or five consultants. Why pay triple, quadruple the price when we can do it for a sa- salary in the city with fringe benefits and so on? So, if anybody has other recommendations for items number one and two, please come, uh, forward with me on it. And as for the mayor's position, uh, the part-time secretary, this is not against any one individual, whether they had a baby or not, this is not. There was, when we discussed this, there was two positions and a floater, the floater was supposed to go around to every department, they're not using that position. I'd rather get that position and put it in the clerk's office, to the treasurer's office, we have a presidential election this year, they're short-staffed, they're overworked. This where, this is not, uh, two, two thousand dollars from every department, there's departments that don't have the help. And item number four, legal fees, all we keep getting is legal bills every single month. Like, we get the bills, we don't know what the budget is every year for, uh, corporation councils, outside council, or opinions. They go off for thirty opinions a month without us knowing, we just get the bills, and some of the bills are ridiculous. If we have, uh, an attorney in the ci- a city attorney, and they need help, hire another attorney. Um, and as for the, number five, for the director of operations in the city, if this position was so critical, it's been vacant for two months. Um, and, uh, like I said, if the mayor wants to bring it back to council for approval later on, or somebody that's qualified. We have no issue doing that, but right now, we can hire more police officers or get better equipment with that money. And, uh.
So I'll, I'll, I'll just, if that's okay, Councilman, I will say a couple of things. I agree, I agree on some of these contractual services, but you have to keep in mind, uh, you know, as far as Wade Trim right now, we got some of the biggest projects the city has seen, so for us to cut a hundred fifty thousand dollars could potentially hinder the growth of, of, you know, these projects that we're doing, that's my number one. And I don't wanna go, like, really go through the weeds too much on it, but I mean, can we cut some of that? Sure, as a hundred fifty thousand. You know, you have to really tell me how this number came about, like, we can't just say, cutting a hundred fifty thousand, it has to say, well, you know what, we're gonna gradually do it, we'll do twenty-five now, we'll do twenty-five next year, we'll do fifty the following. And that, you know, you can kinda gradually start saying, we, you know, we were able to work with, you know, say they have a budget for three hundred thousand, we took twenty-five. I mean, you know, in a couple of months, we took another twenty-five, we say, okay, for that year, we save fifty thousand dollars. To come one lump sum, cut off a hundred fifty thousand, it's, it's gonna be a little hard, just let me finish, and then you can go through it. As far as Plant Moran Gap at a hundred twenty thousand, I'm gonna tell you right now. I, I sat in a meeting with Plant Moran Gap, and, and, and I asked them to cut fifty thousand dollars. We were once paying them almost eight hundred and fifty thousand, where they are now at close to four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand.
Three fifty.
Or, or three hundred fifty thousand, they were at eight hundred, so they're gradually going away. I can tell you right now, it would be doing a disservice to, to the comptroller's office, who's only been here for, with us for a couple of months, if we try to eliminate anything on Plant Moran. I, look, there's nobody here that's been more vocal on eliminating Plant Moran Gap than myself, I've actually called Brian and said it to him, you need to leave our city. However, we know what's gonna happen, if, if we let this go, the work that they've done for the last few years could potentially hurt us. So like, and I've spoken with Mehdi on this, I've spoken with, who's the, uh, interim deputy comptroller. And I spoke with the comptroller just today before coming into this meeting, she said, no, I want them gone, but right now, you'd be hurting us if they left. And let me tell you, the last thing I wanna do is say, I supported something and eliminated a position. Uh, um, and, and then, you know, we started seeing, we went through six different controllers, but what I can tell you with my conversation to Brian is, Shannon gets it. He said, he said, out of the six, this one understands it, so to me, it's like, we, we, you gotta be able to give and take. As far as the, well, I'm, I'm gonna go through them, as far as the mayor's position, look, the mayor, and, and this is nothing, I swear it's nothing personal. If the treasurer's gonna lose theirs, and the clerk's gonna lose theirs, and they're understaffed, and, and, and we had to make certain budget cuts, then having three, uh, uh, positions is not necessary, I agree with you on that, that one, you, 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 you have me on that one. The, the, uh, budget of outside council by seventy-five thousand, um, I, I can tell you this. What we can do is start telling corporation council, you wanna go up for legal opinions, let's get our consent first, you know? Um, and I'm not saying, you know, he's gonna have to go for consent on every single thing, but if he's gonna start getting consent for anything over five hundred dollars, bring him for the council. Right, if we're gonna be, I mean, we have a corporation council for a reason, and, and the quote-unquote, last meeting, the mayor said was, well, we have somebody in-house, and we're not being charged an hourly fee, but I'll tell you something, we're getting a lot of opinion letters, you're right. We are getting a lot of opinion letters, but I'm sure, uh, uh, you know, Roger needs those opinion letters, and we gotta keep in mind that if we need these certain opinion letters. Uh, it, it could be, again, for the city, so if you, you wanna be able to critique it or tailor it a little bit, where you say, hey, Roger, you're doing too much of this. We need to slow it down, tell Roger, before you start getting opinion letters, get our approval, Roger says, hey, guys, I need to go up for an opinion letter on one, two, and three, put it before us. I agree, Roger, you shouldn't be spending fifty thousand dollars on opinion letters a year, that's, that's a lot of money. You know, we're, we're talking about the fifty thousand dollars in special legal counsel, we got over fifty thousand dollars in opinion letters, uh, so, so. You know, there's so many different avenues happening here, and I feel like sometimes everybody's so quick to just, you know, point their finger at the council. The council, let's call them when there's an issue, the council, let's call them when, when this is happening, the council, you know, they're the bad ones, they're the ones that are spending a hundred thousand dollars on special legal counsel. We're only spending a hundred thousand dollars on special legal councils because the council is being stripped away from its powers. That's the truth, and I don't wanna speak too much of it, but if the council makes a decision, and then the city gets sued, and the corporation council says, you guys have no say in anything. The council needs to be able to protect its, 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 its voting power, and, and right now, that's why we have special legal council. Um, as far as number five goes, I agree, this council from the, from the position from the beginning, where I stand, and I stood firmly with this on the mayor. This position, if the mayor wants it, should come to the council, he needs to come to the city council if you're gonna create a new director position, plain and simple. I mean, the, we, if, if the position existed in the past, then you're appointing somebody to a director position is one thing. But creating a brand-new position and saying to the council, I'm gonna give this much money, and you have no say in any of it, it's wrong. But this position is clearly vacant, we haven't had it for two months, if the mayor feels like he has somebody that he wants to fill the seat, bring him for the council, nothing wrong with that. And, and I like the fact that you wanna leave the money in the police department, and we're not stripping that money away from the police department, maybe, maybe the police chief tomorrow says, you know what, I wanna hire a deputy chief. And, and, you know, he brings somebody to the rankings of Act seventy-eight, and, and now you still have that money to put somebody as the deputy chief, because at one point, we had a deputy chief in Dearborn Heights. We no longer have one, but I, I would love to see that. Uh, but that's here nor there, I'm not a police officer, nor do I work in the police department, nor do I wanna be in the trenches of the police department, because, you know, that's what our men and women in our police department do. But that's where I personally stand on this, I can tell you right now, cut a little bit from Wade Trim, I think we need to just slow down on Plant Moran Gap, I think you should give Brian a call, because he said to me, you know, I should have called Brian, you know, I should have reached out to Councilman Saab, and you should, you should have this conversation, cause look, Brian's also in the business of being, of, of making money, all he's gonna do is go from being Plant Moran Gap, to auditing our books at the end of the year and still making money. But to him, wherever he stands, but he said, no, you guys need help, the, the, the comptroller's department and the treasurer's department is, is doing so many mistakes that if we leave. Taxpayers are gonna, are gonna, are gonna be affected.
Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
So, I, I'm, I'm, uh, this is, this is for discussion, and yes, I, I agree, and so I asked for your opinion, as for Wade Trim for growth, honestly. The whole purpose is, is to get Mr. Deeb assistance in the city, like, to, to relieve uh, on contractual services and put it in-house, and, and I think everybody on this body would agree, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, well, I can work with that, I can go to seventy-five thousand. But the only reason I put this kind of position is if we're gonna hire somebody in at full-time, or fringes and everything, this is a good, uh, salary to start off with, or maybe two people. That's, that's where I came up with these numbers, the comptroller's office, hey, I tell you, she's, she's A-one, I'm not disagreeing with you, but she needs she needs assistance in her, in her office, not a contractor, in her office.
I agree with you.
And, and this is where I came up with these numbers, yes, do you want me to cut them in half? I'm willing, and I have no issue with it. My thing is that I'm trying to bring city employees in, trained, in-house. That we do have a supervisor out in the field, looking over the streets, measure, uh, checking out streets that are bad. Or whatever projects that Mr. Deeb has, if he's on one side of the town, another assistant on other side of the town, that's how the city.
Great intention on this, and.
And this is where the money, where the numbers came up, I, I'm not trying to eliminate the positions, or eliminate Wade Trim or Plant Moran by any means. I'm just trying to say, hey, let's lower their, their presence a bit, and let's give them, uh, more help, more assistance, more work. For them, in-house, and, and, me personally, I'd like to see one hundred percent of the comptroller's office ran by city employees. No con- no outside contracts, but I know it's not gonna happen overnight, it's gonna take time.
Have great intentions, by the way, and I, and I really, I love.
And, and, and as for the legal fees, uh, with Roger, I have no issue if he comes back with consent, we can have a million dollars as long as he gets consent from us, I just, I just think it's too much. So, uh, this is, this is nothing personal against anybody, this is actually telling the administration here, here's money, hire more people.
Just come through council.
Come through council, that's it.
Council Chair? Thank you, Council Chair, I just wanna echo whatever you said, and I wanna thank Councilman Saab for bringing this forward, but I wish it was like, separated, like you said. Uh, for number one and number two, Wade Trim and Plant Moran were not, like, cutting their budget, basically, we're cutting contractual services budget. So you cannot just cut their budget, we're cutting the contractual services budget, I mean, uh, but Wade Trim, like Council Chair said, we have so many projects out there. What I would do, I probably, I would love to see it go out for bids and have another consulting company probably, so it'll be more competitive.
I'm for that.
That way, so, I don't know if that's possible, I mean, I mean, I know they've been, they've been here forever, so I would, I would love to see uh, the, uh, contract going out for bids, so we can have maybe more than one person, more, more than one company. Uh, for, for Plant Moran, I mean, like Council Chair, from day one, I wanna know to be out, but to be honest with you, I mean, I know Shannon, she's an uh, A-plus, uh, personnel, and she's doing a great job, but like, like he said, she still needs some time, and I think we still need her here in the city.
Okay.
And hope, and I had the productive conversation with her, and she promised, hopefully, by ne- next fiscal year, that hopefully they'll be out, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna push for that.
Quote-unquote, and I told her, I don't know if you remember this, but I have a memory of an elephant, you're gonna say this, and the next year, I'm gonna bring this up to you, she said she promises to cut most of what we're playing Plant Moran Gap today, which is two hundred fifty thousand.
Correct, and according to Shannon, she's still missing one more person in her department, she, she's missing one, she needs one more employee. Uh, for the mayor's office, I mean, I know you said, I don't know what Mariana said, there's two part-times. I know their maternity leave.
No, one of them's not in the mayor's office, though the part-time that's, uh, the one that sent us an email doesn't work with, uh, the special legal or.
Is, is she still on? I mean, is Mariana still on? Mariana, are you still here?
Sorry, I am, um.
Hello, Chief of Staff, so how, how many part-time timers we have in the mayor's office right now?
So, uh, they have been a little bit in rotation because our part-timers are college students, I'm so sorry. Um, and, um, and, uh, one of, one of them was not. And, uh, one of, one of them was not a college student, and she did have a baby, so she is still with us. And, uh, she helps very few hours. So again, that's why with the part timers, it's more about the salary rather than. Like the total amount of money, right, that we have, and it can be split between various people. So we do have currently. A young lady that started about two weeks ago that is sitting in the front desk, and we do still have on payroll. Uh, the other employee that was not a college student but is currently with her baby. No, Stephanie's a full-time employee.
Okay.
And I also wanted to clarify with regards to the floater position. That was a full-time floater position that we had proposed, that we did wanna split between the clerk, called the treasurer, and and anybody else in the city hall that needed the help. But that was not for a part-time position. That was a proposal for a new full-time position. This would be a permanent person. That rotates with the seasons across the different departments that we had discussed during the budget season. Um, but that never came to fruition because we never had enough money for the floater. The part timers have always been the part timers and. Uh, um, there were, I believe, a little bit of cuts in in the clerk's department and the treasurer's department as well. I agree. But as I mentioned, there were also cuts in the mayor's department, and the problem with the mayor's department is that. I'm mostly in the office, but I'm constantly in meetings with directors, right? And and I'm in various different locations. I'm talking with the grant people, I'm talking with the directors, and we only have Stephanie as a full-time person. So let's say Stephanie takes lunch, then there's no coverage in the office at all. So that's why it's a critical position to have that part timer. Because it typically covers our lunch hour, um, even though we do try to coordinate that.
Chief of Staff.
I, sorry, I just have a few more things that I wanted to to touch base with, and I do highly recommend that it's better if we just do this in a study session. With the comptroller present and the H R director there, so we can clarify any questions.
Mariana, I want you to know that at the last meeting, we said we were gonna do this, and Wednesday.
Weight trim, um, I know that you're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but but from what I recall with weight trim and. Uh, you can look at the minutes from the last meeting as well. Um, we don't have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our general fund, um, money. Most of the money that goes to them comes from water and highway. So I know that you're trying to cut the general fund expenses. But cutting weight trim doesn't really have that big of an impact, because the amount of money that comes from the general fund. For weight trim is minimal, and it's it's a little bit of work that they do for for the building and engineering department. But it's not even a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's critical that we take a look at that, and we did give you the breakdown of all of the invoices that we had from weight trim. So we would just have to look at that and and see like what from the general fund you wanna cut. Or if you really do want to cut from water and sewer, uh, and highway, then that's another conversation. Because those are typically contractual terms that we have with that company that has been awarded the engineering services for those projects. Including our C S Os and our, as you were discussing earlier, um, some of our major and local road projects. Um, and things like that. So I I would just be cautious and and rather than voting on it today, I would just encourage all of you to. To have a study session on this budget.
Uh, thank you, Chief of Staff. I'm sorry, you got me confused about the part-time position. So do we have two right now in the mayor's office? Or one? Cause since one in.
So we have one that's currently present, working physically in the office. We have one that's on the books, right? We haven't removed her from our H R payroll. Because she's on maternity right now. Well, not maternity, because they don't get maternity, you know? But she has expressed that she would like to come back, and if she can work on small projects here and there, she would like to do that.
Okay. So Mariana, I'm sorry, I had one more question. So you said you filled up this position two weeks ago?
Yes, we had another lady that was working, but uh she took another position. So again, that's the problem with part timers, when they find a full-time job or. Or a better option, they they tend to leave, and that's why earlier I said, you can't really count how many people. Because in one year, you may have ten part timers, but that doesn't mean that they're going to exceed the twenty thousand dollars that we have allocated for the hourly. Um, amount of time that they can work for us, so.
So currently, now, right now, we, you hired another part-time employee that started, you said, two weeks ago?
Yes, but the other person. Uh, yeah, so it's it's a rotational position, depending on the seasons and the availability of the people.
How many do we have? Two, one, three? How many do we, how many do we have? Do we have three?
No, we've never had three.
Okay.
I mean, to be honest, it doesn't matter if we have ten. It's just a budget. Either instead of eliminating a part-time position, you can reduce the budget. Instead of giving on fifty thousand, for example, you want twenty five thousand. They can hire ten people if they want for that part-time position. Uh, so it doesn't mean, it doesn't matter how many position he has, matters how much money he's spending on part timers. Uh, thank you.
Correct, correct, and that's what we already did. So last year, the budget for part-time was fifty six thousand, this year it's twenty five.
Twenty five thousand for the part-time?
Correct. So we already had cut it in half, just like we did with all the other part timers in the department. So again, if you wanna continue to do more cuts across the part-time positions. We can consider that again during a study session and see how we can get the coverage that's necessary for all the departments and how many more cuts we can afford.
Council chair.
It's my understanding that City Hall is still closing for lunch hours, is that correct?
Yes. Say it though, cause I just don't wanna get back in the back and forth.
No, no.
Mariana, I know you said there in lunch that, you know, you have one of the part timers cover you during lunch. City Hall is closed during lunch.
We have not closed for lunch in about two years. It's it's been a while, so no, we don't close close for lunch anymore.
Oh, that's awesome. I did not know that. Okay.
Thank you, Chief of Staff. Uh, number four, I'm not sure, do we have a, I can't recall the budget for the outside, uh. Uh, legal, uh.
Go ahead and ask Roger.
Yeah, I'll address the councilman. Um, in two thousand, I got this numbers from the controller, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, we had it at three hundred forty-two thousand. Just for the. I can't, yeah, just for this outside council, and when I came in in two thou- um, and the two thousand twenty-two. Uh, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, I reduced it to two hundred two thousand. Twenty-four to twenty-five, we've reduced it now to seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand. That's what I'm doing to make sure we reduce it, and yes, you do get bills, but we've increased the litigation. There are issues we're tackling with the police and the fire, with good faith, because, you know, when you, when you're looking, you need experts in labor law in certain areas. Like, for instance, retiree healthcare benefits, that's caused hamtramck, that's called Detroit to go bankrupt. Because if you're not on top of that, and 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 everyone wants, we wanna be fair to our firefighters and these officers, we have to also understand the consequences. There's a lot more litigation there's uh in the city, but being in-house, I'm able to manage it and do a lot of the work. That's why I can go from three forty-two to seventy-five thousand. Then you took sixty thousand away from my budget. Which I'm I'm going for a restorative justice program with Judge Turfy. And, um, when kind prosecutor, I put something in us for juveniles, for our middle school kids and for our high school kids. The restorative justice program is, uh, we're looking for private funding, and I'm completing the work with, um. In getting our civic association complete legally, it's already incorporated. But we're getting the the uh five oh one C three status finished, so all of our commissions can raise money. Um, we can't do it as a city, but the commissions under the five oh one C three can raise money with different groups. And we've gone back and forth with emails, which you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Perino.
Looking at creative programs, but my budget went from three forty-two to seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
I'm about keeping it low. Yeah, you get bills every month, of course you.
Thank you very much, but I do agree with council chair. I mean, if we can, um, if you can run it by us before you send it out for opinion, that would be great. Uh, moving to number five, council and staff, that's a no-brainer. Uh, I do agree a hundred percent with number five, so I would hope you can amend your motion. Maybe we can take the other four to a study session like you probably would be better, and to go out and vote on number five right now.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Council chair, if I may address number five. Um, we're in contract negotiations, collecting bargaining agreement with that position. And with command officers, we even had a tentative contract, a tentative agreement signed last night. Um, in terms of meeting with the the positions of director, new positions with captains, sergeants. It's a complete board that we're dealing with, with wages, hours, working conditions, healthcare, pension, um grievances, which we've got about seven. This is all tied in together, and it's it's, it doesn't behoove us to interfere with this. We have another negotiations tomorrow morning. So, uh, and arbitration as well. So I think that how you're talking about. Not using the word, or stopping a position, that's part of the bargaining process that I just mentioned that we're engaged in. Um, an email went out to the offices, um, mirroring our tentative agreement last night, went out today. We're getting ready for a meeting tomorrow. Um, I think both under the, um, like the bargaining agreement, under the unfair labor practices. National Labor Relations Act, um, Public Employment Relations Commissions. You're interfering with the contractual negotiations by doing anything to touch that director's position right now. Um, so.
Okay, council chair, I'd like to amend my budget. My, my, I'm sorry, my motion.
I'm sorry, give me one first, councilman. I I didn't hear your voice, sorry.
Oh, no, I. No, I don't say if you, is there anyone else? I was waiting for you to ask. Um, number one, number two, uh, we have to talk about that, obviously. And, uh, the the mayor's office, and we need to maybe hire, I mean, we got a budget for part-time like Councilman Ahmed said. Doesn't matter if you have, if you have fifty thousand, doesn't matter if you have ten at five thousand dollars, it's 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 the budget, so it doesn't matter how many you got in there. But we look, we gotta look at that, and you hire someone from the clerk's office and the treasurer's office, because they're both understaffed. And, um, number four, if we reduce the legal fees to seventy-five thousand, I think we should take the, uh. The special legal counsel, uh, budget of a hundred thousand, reduce that to seventy-five thousand.
I'm for that.
Yeah, that way we can, we can, we can get another fifty thousand dollars and create the money for a position. So, uh, one, two, and three, yeah, one, two, and three, I want, I definitely wanna, but you'll talk about that later. Number four, I I'd like to, you know, reduce our budget, our special legal counsel budget to seventy-five, from one hundred to seventy-five thousand. And number five, I mean, that's, that's a great way to start saving money, because this position is vacant. So I think we should vote at, at least on number, you know. Yeah, four, what about number four, though?
Well, number four, we're gonna take to a study session, because we have to look at his budget as well.
Well, I mean, why, I mean, what do we have to look at?
We don't, we don't know how much, cause what if he's not spending up to seventy-five thousand dollars? What if he's only spending fifty thousand? If we take seventy-five, that's all he has, so he'd be zero, right?
Yeah, so I mean, and and we just said that we haven't spent any money on our special legal counsel, so have it at a hundred thousand.
I just want, I don't, I hope you, cause I also saw that you had an opinion too, on especially a council that you would have never supported if it went up to a hundred. I wanna make something clear, you supported it when it went to fifty, and we spent zero dollars. That fifty thousand dollars from last year went right back into the general fund. So the city council spent zero dollars on special legal counsel. Moving to this year, what we did was, Councilman Ahmad requested that we moved it up. If we spend this entire year, if we spend zero dollars, the hundred thousand dollars is going back into the general fund. And so now, just so you know, zero dollars of taxpayer money has went towards, until we get in a bill, which we've not gotten a bill. Zero dollars of of taxpayer money has went to a special legal counsel.
Well, we could have a possible hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and and I don't, I personally don't think, uh, we've had two hundred dollars an hour.
I'm gonna do some quick math for you.
You would need the hourly rate, and I don't think you've got a bill. But they've been very active. They've been meeting with the M M R M A lawyers, very active.
We'll do a study session on it and.
I mean, not, we're gonna do a site, we can have the Gary Miyakis give us right to date to today. If he, if he's got a invoice for us, or no, he's doing everything for free, or, you know, just so we know and the residents know.
I agree with you. One of the reasons why we said they weren't gonna hit was, they said that they weren't gonna build was, they were gonna wait to hear back from the judges' room. That's, and we've not had a judge's ruling at this point. Um, and it's been since, it's been since March, February, March.
Is there any kind of timeframe where we think we're gonna get a judge's ruling on this?
We have not heard anything from the judge, and really, I I asked that everybody refrain some kind of speaking up, since everybody's lawyered up. Might be some lawyers in the background, I'm not sure, um, but it's probably best that everybody just, you know. Better said nothing than say something on. But if you wanna lower that to seventy-five thousand, Councilman, that, I'll even lower it to fifty thousand. We spent zero dollars on the last year. And and so, but we just started being proactive. Um, but if you think even fifty thousand, it doesn't make.
Well, I mean, at least seventy-five thousand. We can, you know.
Well, that's not on this amendment right here, so it would have to be on September tenth. You wanna amend this, Councilman Ahmad, you wanna amend that? Add a special legal counsel to be reduced to seventy-five thousand?
But I'd rather take this to a study session with everything, or put that one to vote on it on the meeting.
All right, yeah, well, okay, we can take that.
Council chair, I just wanna make sure, we're not eliminating any of the people who work for me. I have a part-time person.
No, 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 you said one, two, four is gonna stop, so.
We're only voting on number five.
Councilman Ahmad, I mean, uh, Councilman, I'm sorry, before I go, before you go anywhere, any other council members with any other discussion?
I'd like to finish what I started earlier.
I'm sorry, that's why I stopped my, my.
All right, okay, uh, well, number four, we'll discuss in the study session, but number five. I really think our police department knows what they need, so if they say there is a need, I think we should leave that possibility there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I think the chief said he wants to speak. Prime time football's taking place at eight twenty kickoff.
All right, um, good evening. So I just wanna talk on, uh, the fifth one, you know, director of police operations position. So, you know, that is a critical position, you know, for the police department, just as a battalion chief would be critical for the, um, you know, for the fire department. I suspect when, um, you know, when that position comes vacant soon with the retirement, that, you know, our city is not gonna eliminate that that position. Because it's a leadership position, and it's needed to to run the police depart- or the fire department. Um, and I would assume those spots that create vacancies as those people get promoted aren't gonna be taken away either. So I would assume that that the police department gets treated in the same type of manner. Um, you know. I think, you know, I think a lot of people need truly understand, you know, the, uh, contract negotiations. And before people comment on act seventy-eight or para or anything else, they need to understand what they're talking about. So when, um, the director's positions were brought in, um, and and, you know, they were negotiated with command. Um, command, um, that C B A negotiated on para takes precedence over act seventy-eight. And that's proven case law, it's 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 a fact. So. Yeah, so with that, and I'm not trying to say anyone's, you know, not intelligent, it's just, it's a fact, though. So, um, with that being said, the C B A trumps, um, you know.
This isn't a, it's in litigation right now, so I'd rather not even.
I I am the, you know, I'm the person who brought it to litigation, so I can speak all I want on it. So, um, and all.
We can't, but we can't even like entertain it, because we have this injunction against them.
Okay, well, you can, you're, the the injunction says that you guys can do your job, and I can do my job. It doesn't stop us from working together to get, um, safety and and processes and things done for the city. It doesn't state that just because you don't wanna have the conversation, that you can blame it on an injunction. It's very important that we provide public safety. And policing for our residents, and by saying, oh, we can't talk about it because of the injunction.
Chief, really, if you wanna have the discussion with it, then number five, the position is vacant right now, under the council's in charge of the money. And the council says, well, when you guys wanna fill that vacancy, since you wanna have the discussion, we will fill that vacancy when you can bring us somebody properly before the council. And and the money's gonna stay in your department, so we're not gonna ask it to believe your department, so when you have it, when you fill up that vacant, bring it for the council, ask for the approval, that's all we're doing here.
Position sitting there vacant, it's not, um, it's not affecting anything in a negative fashion, right? So if you're in charge of the money. I I respect that. You guys do a great job, right? But I'm in charge of the positions which are, uh, listed in the contract. The director of police operations position is listed in the contract, is approved by you guys.
Approved by us.
Yes, approved by you guys. Agreed, agreed to in the contract with command, right? Command that now owns that position, right? That position is not our position, it's it's vacant. The, it says that that C B A, the C B A states that that position now belongs to command. Now, you could say we're gonna eliminate that position, but that's not bargaining in faith or, um, following through with. Um, the contract that you approved by eliminating a spot within their union.
Council chair, sorry.
The the council that we approved, by the way, chief, uh, we amended, right? We, there was an amendment made there. Uh, but then it went into litigation, but I wanna make it also address it. If command owns this position. And that you guys agree to it, we also have the autonomy of every other director, because the mayor chooses and the council concurs with it. And this is a director position, and so the charter says, the mayor can choose a director under any position that was approved by the body. The the charter does not say that the mayor can create a position and appoint a department head of the of of that department. Cause there was never a department of police operations, but there became a director of police operations, but there was never a department. The charter states otherwise. So I don't, but see, this is why I said that, I mean, it's it's opinionated so much on so many back and forth. I can tell you right now, under, under, on the record, here. Cause I've been working hand in hand with you, chief, and I've I've given you my word every single time.
Because I've been working hand in hand with you, chief, and I've, I've given you my word every single time, and you've given me your word every single time. You bring somebody back forward on this position, I'm gonna one hundred percent support whoever you bring, because that is, you are running the police department. I'm not gonna tell you who I think is gonna be the best person for that position, you are, you're the police chief. But what I am gonna say is, if this money is gonna be allocated, and a department is gonna be created, and it's gonna be a director before it. The power of the legislative body is gonna be able to make that yes or no. And that wa, that never happened in the past, but I, but I'm here looking at you eye to eye and telling you, I'm gonna be a man of my word, wherever you bring. Just like you said, it's not harming anybody if the money's there, because the money's gonna stay in, it's not harming anybody if you come back before the council. What we're trying to do here, if, and if you're not reading through the lines, is we're requesting proper policy and procedure, that's all we want. We don't care who you appoint, we don't care what's happening in the police department, but what we do care is that our, that our, 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 our voting power is not being stripped away.
Yeah, so what I'm trying to say is, uh, is, you know, we're working with the command right now. Um, about this position, as a matter of fact, we're meeting tomorrow, ten o'clock, again, rescheduled. Um, to, to deal with this position, so we can make sure that, that our operations in the police department are, are proper, right? So I think that um, you know, that position is, you know, a um, a defined position. And it is a, a position that, that Command, um, if it is eliminated in any type of way. Um, would be able to grieve the fact that that position is not um, eligible for them, and I think that. You know, if you give us a, maybe until next meeting, that, that we would have something um, for you, maybe we include it in that study session, but. I think tonight is, is a premature time to take a vote on this, because it's gonna affect, um, and I, I believe that. It's gonna create multiple grievances, um, that we can avoid by just delaying this a week or, or two weeks. And, and I do respect you guys, and I think we work well together, um, but, you know, we're not always gonna see eye to eye. Uh, but this one here, I do believe is in everyone's best interest to make sure that, that we, um, part of the city, including yourselves. Um, have a good faith bargaining effort with Command, um, and we can resolve this and get this taken care of, so we can now fill that position. Whether it's from someone else, or whether it's through um, the Act Seventy-Eight process, which currently, that's the way it's supposed to be done.
Correct, I agree.
In fact, Council Chair, I would add to that.
That position that belongs to Command is also not a union position, that position is non-union.
Because in their contract, it states, it specifically states that um, the only positions. The only positions in the police department that are excluded from the contract and from the union are the deputy chief and the chief of police. So therefore, um, according to the union, and they told me that they're gonna file a grievance, is that that position. Is their position, and it's a union position, and we all agreed to it when we bargained last time.
In fact, after.
Roger, please, just Roger. I'm gonna let you go, Council Chair, and Roger, you gotta go through the chair, you have to go through the chair, that's. I'm gonna let Councilman Sob go, and then you're next.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman also, please, thank you, but I understand that, but I, I'm, 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 I promised that Councilman was next. Roger will go next, and Councilwoman, if you have something to say, I'll choose you next.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir, um, this union is not a union position, because believe me, if it was a union position, everybody in the union would have jumped on it, this position's been vacant for two months. If it's a critical position, it would have filled, um, a reoccurring back-to-back, it's been vacant for two months, and I, and I. And I support Chief Swope, and I told him, you got my word on it, uh, you bring this position back, the motion clearly says, it reads. The mayor may bring this decision back if needed in the future with a qualified person for council's approval. That's all it says, this money right now, it's sitting, hey, we, we do need more police officers, you tell us no, the mayor tells us no, we need more police officers. There's crime in the city, we wanna fight it, if I, we, we can hire a hundred more police officers, we're gonna do it. But right now, this position is such a critical position, has not been used in two months.
I'm doing all the jo, I'm doing all the work. Because we're working with Command, because the.
When was the first time you guys met with Command regarding this?
Well, I've talked into their union many times.
Yesterday.
I didn't meet.
No, not you, I know you weren't there, but when was the official meeting?
So, that meeting.
June, July, Council Chair, I may address you. In fact, what we're talking about, and the collective bargaining agreement and the contract, and he's been filling the job and doing both jobs. But the, the contract says it becomes Act Seventy-Eight after two thousand twenty-six. But now, part of the negotiations that the union is working with is, when can we then transfer it, maybe even sooner? So I don't wanna get into more details about it, but it's part of the bargaining positions being taken. And I don't agree that how it, it's just like it's been vacant and empty, it's a director of operations position, and it's been done by the chief. Um, the collective, the command officers we met with again yesterday. Took time to go through how that position's gonna open up other positions in the union, and when it will go into the union. So I'm not gonna go into the details, we do have an agreement, that's, right now, it's confidential till we get it. And I don't disrespect you by cutting you off. Council, Council Chair. I, I'm saying that there are terms, yes, there's Act Seventy-Eight involved, there's a time when Act Seventy-Eight would come in. There's an issue involving when it will become, if it'll become a union position. As well as new positions being added in, in relation to this position that the union wants. And I think it's premature and violates the open, the collective bargaining agreements. To interfere right now with this position, or try to eliminate it or defund it. As of yet, I have not seen anything financially from Councilman Sob to justify any of these positions being eliminated. That's, that's all I'm.
Not even your seventy-five thousand. Yes, Councilman Constant.
So, wh- what I hear the chief saying, and this is a big issue, this was the issue from the beginning. So, the contract was negotiated, those two positions were new and had been filled. But the contract was negotiated after, after that. So those, you know, we have to hear from the police union, and we have to hear from, uh, you know, management, what their. Position is, you know, going forward regarding those uh, two positions, that's, that's always been the question. So they, the collective bargaining agreement was negotiated, uh, and signed after. The, the two uh, new individuals were in that position.
And their contracts.
Okay, guys.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Was that a, I mean, do you have a question with that?
No, I think he was just reiterating. Is that what you're saying?
It makes, it, it makes, uh, what you said makes sense, if I understood you correctly, yes.
Go ahead, Council, uh, Wenzel.
Yeah, thank you, um. I voted no on this contract originally, I was the only one here that voted no on the command officer contract, which included. These new positions that were created without Act Seventy-Eight, and it was admitted in that contract. That it was created without following Act Seventy-Eight rules, but from now, and the contract said, from now on, we'll follow Act Seventy-Eight. Now, just the fact that what Roger said is, uh, this'll become a union job, or we'll follow Act Seventy-Eight. In two thousand twenty-six, that, right there, timeout, I'm, I'm voting, I'm voting for this right now. I mean, that, that statement alone, two thousand twenty-six, is when we're gonna take this, and act, follow Act Seventy-Eight rules on this?
He meant, what, what Roger meant was, my contract was good till two thousand twenty-six, but now it's vacated.
Well, it's gonna be, it, it's gonna be following Act Seventy-Eight right immediately.
Well, keep in mind, we've never.
There's no harm in do, in voting yes on number five right now, I don't think. As, as far as negotiating, I think we're giving the command officers false sense of, sense of something. By saying that position is in there, but, but maybe it might be de, de-legal having that position.
Their union, not me.
So, Chair, let's move on.
So, a, a, another more correct way of saying it is, those two positions, the, the persons in those positions were not hired. According to the Act Seventy-Eight Civil Service Rules, and in fact, the contract says that in the future. They will be hired pursuant to the Act Seventy-Eight Civil Service Rules. It's just a more correct way of saying what I think we're all saying.
Thank you. Chair, it's, I'm not saying it's, I'm not talking about the person that's in that position, I'm talking about the position.
I know, I know what you're saying, okay. You're talking about the actual position.
The position, not any person that's in that position.
Council Chair, I would suppo, if I may, I, I would not argue uh, against Council.
Please, nothing from the audience, guys, please.
Council Chair, I'll just add that how the union is very sharp, they're on top of this, and they understand. The, 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 the positions that they want, there are other positions that they want also, that are likely being created as well, without going to any more details. But, uh, Act Seventy-Eight is considered, the, there's a collective bargaining agreement, and there's individual contracts that all have to be looked at. And for us to say, eliminate this director position, I think it, it may even violate our injunction, I'll bring it up. Because that position is protected under there, but it's your call to decide what you can do tonight, I would not vote on this tonight. I think let the, let the union handle it themselves, and follow the collective bargaining rules.
Uh, Council Chair, I'd like to amend my uh, motion to take items one through four to a study session.
So you wanna just, no, hold on, let's eliminate one through four, and eleven A. No, okay, that's, that's a whole different part, you wanna amend your motion to eliminate. One through four, so we're not, we're not voting on White Chamber, we're not voting on Plumber, we're not voting on the mayor's office, we're not voting on, on Roger's legal fees. We're only voting on five on the Director of Operations of Police Department.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by. Motion made by Councilman Sob to amend his motion, George, do you have that?
Yep, so, but I wanna, I wanna also add uh, some verbiage to number five. Um, I'd like it to say to amend the budget, to remove the vacant position, from uh, to remove the vacant position. With the funds coming back to the general fund, the mayor may bring back this position if needed in the future with a qualified person with council approval. The mayor may not introduce any new position without the council approval, or spend the money without council approval.
You're just trying to spend the money.
And spend the money, that's it, and then, as for the part for Act Seventy-Eight, I wanna remove that out of the uh, motion.
Support. Motion made by Councilman, hey, Rick, you can't make me laugh up here, right?
The general fund is to be spent, man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should leave it in the police department budget.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll re, rephrase that to leave it in the po, uh, police budget, but it's not to be spent without council's approval.
There you go, see what happens, you got a veteran in the audience?
You wanna write it, you wanna say it again?
Yes, do you want me to reread it? Okay, we'll start again, uh, for number five, the Director of Operations, uh, the but, uh. To, uh, to amend the budget and remove the vacant position of Director of Operations, with the funds coming back to the police fund. The mayor may bring this position back if needed in the future with a qualified person with council's approval. The mayor may not introduce any new position without the council's approval, or spend any of the money.
When you say that he's not to introduce a new position, you wanna say a new director position?
New director, leader of.
Okay. No.
No.
No, that's a, that's a department, the, the, the police of operations, Director of Operations is a department. You can't be a director of, of, what department is the director of? You know, of what department?
Operations.
Okay, all right, George, do you have everything you need? Dana, if you need him to read it one more time, he will.
Uh, Director of Operations, um, to amend the budget and remove the vacant position. Of Director of Operations, with the funds coming back to the Police Department Fund. The mayor may bring back this position if needed in the future with a qualified person with council's approval. The mayor may not introduce any new director position without the council's approval. Nor spend the money without council's approval.
Mr. Abdul-Hak, please. Support. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, you, Dana, are we good with that, George? Hearing no other discussion, all in favor, please stay at aye. Those opposed?
No.
Um, please take roll call.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Dune?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Robert Hanston?
Yes.
Denise Melanowski-Mexco?
Yes.
Hassan Sad?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, next up, we have eleven B, Council Chair Pro Tamamad Resolution opposing in the transportation of storage of. Radioactive material in Van Buren Township, Wayne County. Uh, but before we do add, read all of this, I believe Councilman Wenzel wanted to add on to this, so. When you read it, let Councilman Wenzel add his part to this resolution.
Sure, I, I wanted to amend it too, to add, uh, because Madam Treasurer, Madam Clerk, they reached out to me, and they wanted to be on this motion resolution.
Yep, and so we wanna amend this to.
Include, uh, Madam Treasurer and Madam Clerk.
Okay.
Uh, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the resolution opposing the transportation and storage of radioactive materials. In Van Buren Township, Wayne County, whereas the health and safety of the citizens of Wayne County is of utmost importance. And whereas the transportation and storage of radioactive materials possess significant risk to public health, safety, and the environment. Whereas it has come to our attention that the radioactive waste is slated to be transported to a hazardous waste facility in Van Buren Township, Wayne County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Dearborn Heights opposes the transportation and storage. Of radioactive materials in Van Buren Township, Wayne County, and urges the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, the State of Michigan, and federal authorities. To take all necessary measures to prevent the transportation and storage of radioactive materials in the region. Be it further resolved that the City Council of Dearborn Heights requests regular updates and information on any proposals. Or actions related to, to the transportation and storage of radioactive materials in Van Buren Township, Wayne County. Be i, it further resolved that the City Council of Dearborn Heights stands in solidarity with the citizens of Van Buren Township. And surrounding communities in opposing the storage of radioactive materials in the region as outlined in eleven dash B.
Second. Hang on, before we get a second, and, wanna add whatever Councilman Wenzel wanted to add.
Well, you know, whereas, um, Wayne County lies in the, I don't know, state, um. In an area with the largest fresh water supply in the world, and we're, we're, we're risking contaminating. The world's largest supply of fresh water, and uh, therefore, let it be resolved that the city of Dearborn Heights. Do no business with any contractor or subcontractor that is involved with hauling, or storing, or transporting. This radioactive material.
I love that twist to it. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, second, uh, with the add-on of Councilman Wenzel, and seconded by Councilman Sob. Uh, any discussion on this? I will say, Councilman, thank you for this, to all of you guys, thank you to the treasurer, thank you to the clerk. Um, I know that the county executive, Warren Evans, has also brought some attention to this, and has been holding some meetings on this, so has the deputy county executive. Um, so I want you guys to know personally, to me, I'm actually scared, like, this goes around, this, this is like. Detrimental to our children, to our crops, to our fresh water, and, and, you know, it's, it's scary to think that. Wayne County and Dearborn, and Dearborn Heights, and, and, you know, all of Wayne County is a place where we wanna start dumping this radioactive stuff, and so to me, I'm, I'm, I'm. Truly, I'm scared, you know, um, but I think the Councilmen for bringing this forward.
Yeah, I, I wanna thank Councilman Ahmed, because I was getting, working on this, and I found out he was doing it to save me some time. But, you know, th- there is a big factor too, you know, it's storing it, and it's not necessarily gonna stay here, you know, they could transport it again somewhere else. But the transportation is, the fact that they're transporting it through our roads, and, and an accident could happen, and that, and that, that would be catastrophic. I mean, we don't even want that stuff in our state at all, I mean, I, I, I can't say, I think it's coming from like Arizona or something. Does it come from New York, okay, so I mean, yeah, I mean, coming to Wayne County, like, why?
Why don't they leave it there?
Especially, you know, with our bad roads, the trucks driving on our bad roads, you know, but uh, still, I'm, seriously, I mean, I don't even want that stuff being transported at all. In, in the state of Michigan, not even coming in here at all, I, I don't know how, what we could do is, this resolution. I know it's stating our opinion and what we think, but we, we gotta take it a step further and come up with some kind of blockage, you know, of this even happening. Not that we're just against it, but what can, what, what can we do?
Police Department, stop them from coming through our roads, I know it's against the law.
Contact the state police or something, I'm sure the people are doing something like this, but just saying we're against it, is just saying we're against it, we, we have to take some kind of action to. Keep this from happening.
Thank you, any other discussion?
Council Chair, sadly, this is the least we could do for our Wayne County residents, for our city residents, for our families, for our kids. Uh, like Councilman Wenzel said, uh, we should do, probably do more, uh. At this time, I'm not sure what we can do, I know it's something in the federal uh, court, but, I mean. I mean, we, we can keep voicing our opinions to Wayne County, to the governor, um, so I hope. Um, so I hope and somehow we can send this probably to the governor, we can send this to the Wayne County uh executive. Uh just to show them exactly where we stand and we're not gonna stop here.
Thank you.
Thank you, council chair.
Anytime, thank you.
Thank you. Um, is, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have uh members of the public. I'm gonna skip over to council members. Oh, we'll go straight to members of the public, or unless you guys wanna go to administration first. Anything from administration?
Public.
Treat the public. Council chair.
I, I just wanna say, I mean, Councilman Musket hit the nail on the head. We, we should be going line by line and. And the administration should be working with us.
Ray Muscat, Havelock Street, thank you, Councilman uh uh Constant, uh proud of you guys, the way you handled this tonight.
Are you gonna go on social media?
I will say that, uh, I'm proud of you. It, 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 it was very refreshing, uh very, very good uh discussion going on. Uh, the corporation council made some good points that you need to listen to, I think, okay? Uh, I'm not involved doing it as deeply as you guys are, but that's my opinion only. Um. The other thing I wanted to bring up was um traffic situation in Dearborn Heights. I, I don't think our, our court, courts are really helping us any. And, and I'm not just saying that about Dearborn Heights court systems, I'm talking about everywhere. The way that people drive and the way they get off on just little fines or just pay to find what their ticket would be, doesn't help us any. These people need to be ticketed, sent to their insurance company, sent to Lansing, because they're never gonna learn. Why are we paying the county or whomever we pay to strike the streets when nobody even knows what those stripes mean on the road? Okay, people driving left-hand turn lanes, merging from the left-hand turn lanes, turning uh. Right onto Ford Road, using all three lanes with just cutting people off, nobody has anywhere to. So I think our court system needs to step up their game, okay? Uh, but and on another note, and this is not to embarrass anyone, but I've caught. Contacted each one of you and everybody's giving me a call back, but you, Councilman Wenzel, and I wanna know, I'm still a citizen of this city. And I deserve a phone call back from my councilman. So the next time I call you, I know you're busy, but you're supposed to return my call. You're supposed to return my call. I don't care if I'm yelling at you, cutting you off, cutting you down. I deserve a phone call from you, because when I was a councilman, I returned all phone calls. Regardless of what they are, and I'm very disappointed that you don't call me back, okay? And you tell other people, oh, you're too busy, you're too busy, not busy for them, but too busy for me.
Tell us too busy.
Uh, I'm just saying.
Never said I was too busy.
Let him finish, Councilman, let him finish.
I'm, I'm just saying, I deserve a phone call back from you, you're my councilman, okay? Everybody here has returned my phone calls. I've had coffee, talk with Councilman Mo- Moby Doom.
Five hours.
Councilman Sob, Nancy Breyer calls me, I call her back, she call, I call her, Councilman Constant, we're constantly texting back and forth. But I deserve a phone call back from you, sir.
I, I. Council chair, I mean, if, if, he, he called me at a time he was bashing me on social media. I know, Ray, come on, come on, Ray. I called you several times.
Come on, Ray, come on.
Come on. Ray, I've never called.
Settle down, Ray.
I've never called you, Ray.
Officer, it's all right, let's just give him back his phone, Ray's all right.
Yeah, I, that's why I've called him, I've called. I called you back, not recently.
Go ahead. You know what, let me have him out of here, please.
Yes, Ray. I, I'll hear your opinion on social media, Ray.
I don't have to kick him out?
No, he's settled. No.
Okay. He gets, man. The chief, you know, you know, right now, there's a lot going on right now and I, I, I hope, yeah, we wanna settle this down, yeah. Yeah, that's it.
I'll, I'll tell you, you called the shots here.
Yeah.
The chief.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we know, Ray, we know how he can.
Hey, point of order, I know, I, this is administration versus council, come on, come on. I wanna just say something, Ray, can you settle down, please? Chief, if it gets worse, can you call the shot and then if, if anything gets worse, will you, will you take action then, chief? Because things are getting bad here. Thank you, yeah. Yeah.
But we know, Ray.
Yeah, you, 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 okay. Things are bad, I, I think, I think the officer felt like things were getting bad in here too. This is a councilman at the end of the day, right? So he's a resident, he's a resident as well. And great, I, I also want you, yeah, not screaming and throwing your phone and pushing over on, on this bar and just stand there next to it, it's gonna happen.
Can we discuss this outside, but let's move forward.
Hang on, the voice is on you for Roger, please stop. I witnessed what just happened in here.
Just giving advice.
Please stop, Roger.
Point of order, Roger.
I will say this, Ray, I know, I know, I know, I know how you feel and you're frustrated right now and you got, and you're, you, you want what's best. But I wanna just be frank with you, the councilman doesn't wanna return your call, he also has the First Amendment right to not return your call. And you don't vote for him then? No, I'm not wrong, he does not need to return your call, nothing in the chart, nothing says. And, and that's.
He doesn't care about me as a citizen.
Maybe that's so, maybe that's so, I can tell you I've returned your phone calls.
Yeah, you have, everybody here has.
But he does not need to return your phone call, he really doesn't.
Yes, that's not very good for a councilman.
It's not, and so when you wanna vote next time, just don't vote for him, you wanna bash him, you can go out and bash him. Right, like you said, we've all stood over here and been bashed, but like throwing our phone, you know, using God's name in vain, crossing over here. I mean. I, I know, I know, Ray, but you know what? You gotta stay calm, Ray, you know?
Council chair, I never said I called him back.
You did.
I, no, I said, I, I said, I called you before. He said, you never called me, I said, I called you. I didn't say, I didn't say I called you back, I never, look at the tape, I never said I called you back.
Anyway. Come on.
Come on, I mean.
Come on. Officer, you know, we don't, we don't want anybody in the truth, everything's fine.
He's fine, he just gets a little hot sometimes, we've been with him for too many years.
All right, all right. Mr. Abdul Hack, you have three minutes, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Zohair Abdulhaq, three, five, four, Rosemary. I believe Tom and Ray are friends, good friends for a long time, they work together. Maybe there is just a little misunderstanding, we'll work on, clear it up, and they will always stay. Our friend and they stay close friends because both of them care about the city and I know each other, they care about each other deeply. Uh, I just want to clarify one more thing uh about what I said at the beginning. When the mayor hired the two positions for directors, he did not have the approval. Of the commission of Act seventy-eight. After he hired them and they filed the grievances and lawsuits against him, the commissioners and the union. He went and gave up some things in the contract, then they approved the contract, they, they will allow him to do this. One time only. Which brings it back that what he did was illegal, I stand by it and I did file a petition. To recall him based on that. And I agree that whatever the agreement with the union trumped this and that. Yes, that is true, but it was done before the agree, bef- before the agreement happened. Which mean he should own his mistake and say, I'm sorry, and it happened, it will not happen again. That's what a gentleman would do. Thank you and have a good night and really thank you for all the discussion you did. Uh, it, it, it is enlightening to see this, you know, intelligent discussion going on in the city. And thank you for everything to protect you doing, to protect the city, to protect the money and to spend it properly. You guys have a good night.
You too, thank you. Any other comments from the public? We're gonna take this, oh, okay, go ahead.
All right, Jerkowski, Columbia Street. Um, I said this in the past, if we need some employees to fill positions temporarily. How about we call some of our old employees to come back and fill in positions on a part-time basis? He just takes a phone call, there's a lot of them out there that'd be happy to come back and help out. Uh, secondly, the letter that you're sending out to the uh environmental people. You guys don't realize how much uh biohazardous material is shipped in from Canada into Michigan. We need something done on that also. This is all being controlled by Eagle and our governor, um, that stuff's gotta stop. If you wanna protect our lakes and everything else like that, you better start stopping the uh biohazardous materials as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Got Tim memory.
Yep, I see that.
Council chair, just one second, this young lady, Ray, you got, you had, you're here to say something or no? I'm sorry, just making sure that you're aware of the public comment.
Like a Jerry, Jerry's finger show. Uh, next up on Zoom, we have Tim memory.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last night at the meeting they had at uh Van Buren, uh at the uh Wayne County Community College. Uh, you can hear me, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh Debbie Dingell said that, that we need to get after our elected officials. Are the House and Senate in Michigan to pass an ordinance, so we can't bring this stuff back into, back. To, not back to Michigan, which don't bring it to Michigan. So she was, they were very adamant about that. Uh, it was on the news last night, so if you wanna go back and see what she said. But uh I don't know what was wrong with what was, came up last week when the mayor brought it up, but. I didn't, I'm glad you finally passed it. Have a good night.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next up we have Escape, please state your name, the city you reside in and the street that you live on.
Sue Kaminski, Ambloid Street, Dearborn Heights, can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi, everybody.
Hi, sir.
I just wanted to let everyone know that in Golfy Manor the other night. We had an occurrence about one ten AM where three individuals were found by ring camera. Um, going into cars. And I, I'd like you know this, the police did apprehend them and I appreciate the response from the police. But Golfy Manor doesn't usually have crime and I really would like to see patrols in this area. We're on the west side of the city and I feel like we tend to get forgot about and we don't get patrols. So that's all.
Thank you, Sue, can you send me an email and I'll have, or and I'll send it over to the chief?
I absolutely will, thank you, Mo.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I, I was skipping that, but I'll, I'll let, since I'll open that back up.
Councilman?
I have a few things, I was uh, I just wanna put this on the record, last night I was at an event. And I had a resident come approach me, a couple of council members. The mayor went out saying a statement to some residents that myself and uh Mr. Mike Shahadi. Uh, that we had asked the mayors to provide us, uh, we wanted free properties from him and that's why we're against him, because he wouldn't do so. I just wanna say something to them here, and I'm putting this on the record, as a councilman and as a resident, that was cowardly, that was wrong, and that is baseless. Without merit. And I'm gonna ask you again, Mayor, and I sent you the email last night, which was.
This is why we have this situation. You don't bring it out, this is not. Stop interrupting. Attack people.
Stop interrupting.
Because I like him.
Please, Councilman, that's.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Guys, I wanna finish this meeting, we've been here for three and a half hours on a study session and two things on the agenda, I mean, come on. If the mayor was not cowardly, and I'll say this again, he would come here and face the public comments and face the residents that said this.
Well, you could say it to.
Is your name Bill Bezy?
Please, guys, please, come on, Roger, Roger. Roger.
I don't know, we, we heard somebody talk on right directly behind, behind, behind some people.
Stop interrupting me, stop interrupting me.
Please, guys, come on, Hoss, you also gotta tone it down, let's just finish this.
Every time I talk, you interrupt.
I know, Roger, please, can you stop it? Can you give me the word that you're gonna stop? Thank you.
I know you like it that much, but I don't.
Thank you. Let's just go, Hoss, just.
Just for the record, I did get a legal counsel and so did Mr. Shahadi. This is absolutely unacceptable, the mayor always goes out in public, face victim. Yesterday, at a union meeting, half of the meeting was council getting bashed. You're gonna talk serious bargaining and negotiations, talk negotiations, don't come for counsel.
You were in council.
I will tell him, Councilman, stop, I will be the one to tell him that.
Roger, please stop, Councilman, let me tell him.
He doesn't understand the word, please stop, may, maybe give him sign language.
Let's, let's, let it go, I'll be the one to tell him. Jesus. Come on.
Um, maybe they should focus more on actual city issues. Um, number three, I wanna actually congratulate Mr. Shahadi. As he closed on one of the largest properties in the city of Dearborn Heights yesterday, worth millions of dollars. Right off of Ford Garden on Arbor Trail, the Mary Ann Hills uh missionary. Um, and Mr. Shahadi is actually uh on Zoom and Mr. Shahadi is aware I'm talking about this. And so our council members here from last night are included on this email. Um, publicly go bash people without merit for his benefit, political benefit is just absolutely wrong. And I will not stand as an elected official or as a resident, nor would I have his attorney keep attacking me at council meetings. Thank you, council chair.
Thank you. I'm just gonna say a couple of things here, um, on, on this comment. First and foremost, um, uh, you know, I know people are entitled to their First Amendment right, I don't believe anybody's entitled to. You know, I come toward the council member, throw his phone, hit this over. And as the council chairs say, hey, like, this, this ain't gonna happen, and chief says, no, leave him. Um, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to disagree with the chief on that order, uh, who I respect dearly, but I, I didn't like the way that was happening. Secondly.
I hope it doesn't happen again, council chair.
Thank you. Secondly, um, I, I respect Councilman Sob, really, on during that study session today. Uh, I was impressed, I really, really, I was impressed the way you, you knew your stuff, you came in with the proof, you showed how there was. You know, you know, no, no uh of those, you know, the concrete that was being poured, showing the videos, you, you came prepared to this uh study session and so. I, I, I wanna say, Councilman, I'm proud of you. Um, uh, uh, third, Roger, please, I, 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 I'm legit. There's a account here on Zoom that's called Roger Point of Order, I am begging you. Please, respected council chair, respect the chambers, respect these council members. When I ask you, if, if, three of the council members are telling you point of order, you gotta be able to give a little bit of respect to us. You gotta let the councilman who has his First Amendment right, is an attorney, you should know. Let him say what he wants to say, and if you wanna rebuttal that, you wanna give, you wanna speak after, speak after. But speaking over somebody or interrupting somebody constantly at every single meeting, just becoming so frustrating, so please, can you stop this? Lastly.
Council chair, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Would you let me have a chance to respond?
Can I finish my time? That, I'll, this is, I'm just, I'm just asking the guys, these meetings are going extremely long. We spent a lot of time here through, through the study session and, and, you know, some things were said today by outside contractors that I didn't like hearing. We, we're getting this really bad image of, of our city, of, of bids and when people do business with the city and. Uh, you know, you know, people talking about why is our fire station look like this and why haven't we stolen, I got a new fire station, what's going on with, you know, on social media about our police department? And why are we losing this? Guys, we, we, we really have become the talk across different municipalities. We really gotta tone it, and it starts with me, it starts with this council, we need to do better. And, and so maybe it means we need to start working, you know, hand in hand with each other, guys, it's really becoming so ugly. And I hate going to the grocery store and hearing that the mayor talked about me, right? I hate the fact that the councilman has to come over here and say he was at a fundraiser last night, which I, I was at the fundraiser, but I wasn't standing next to them. But I, I believe the couple of council members were there, you know, to say that, you know, somebody was bribing or taking money or doing this. Shame on any of that type of talk, now whether it's true or not, the fact that a resident is saying it.
Shame on any of that type of talk. Now, whether it's true or not, the fact that a resident is saying it, it, to me is, is, and, and I told you guys. When a resident approached me and said, you know, the administration, the mayor would knocked on my door and made it seem like he was the victim, and you guys were the problem. Just gotta stop, because let me tell you, I can be the, I can be the one that goes on Facebook and, and I can tell you something right now, I'll break my silence, and if I break my silence, I promise you, I'm going to get a lot of people that are gonna start seeing my side. And what I've tried to do here is tone it down, I've been trying to stay quiet. But if I need to be the one that comes out and says, I'm the one being mistreated, I'm the one that had been sworn in, I've been the one that had, have, sitting in a meeting and, and disrespected. I just watched the councilman get, just a phone thrown at him. We, we went through a burial of the scene and, and pushed it. Use God's name in vain, what are we becoming? We gotta relax. We really gotta relax a little bit. And as far as defunding the whole police department, which, I don't know why this whole thing is still being said. Uh, I, I'm gonna put a resolution next week, uh, you know, and, and support of the superior bodies, saying that this council supports our police department. And we are not defunding the police department. And I'm gonna ask, uh, for police officers in our police department to sign it, and I'm gonna ask the chief to sign it. Uh, and anybody that's in that department that does not sign it, will know that you're part of the problem of making these lies. And I promise you, I'm gonna get a lot of elected officials, and not just our police department, but other, other departments, Michigan State Police, County, Dearborn. I'm gonna ask them to support, because they know who we are. They know we're not defunding the police. Today, there was a position that's vacant. We're saying, if you want this position, come back for the council. I looked at chief in the eyes and I said, whomever you bring will support, you're the, you're the chief at the end of the day, you make that decision. I don't operate your police department, nor do I wanna operate your police department. What I will tell you is, I still have voting power. That voting power is to say, if you're gonna bring somebody, you need the concurrence of these seven council members, at least majority. Three, four of us have to vote yes, that's all we're saying. Regardless of what was talked about in, in any bargaining agreement. And had I, and, and you know what, I, I apologize for the third time, the Councilman Wenzel on that, because he told me not to vote on yes on that. But I also didn't wanna stop away from giving our police officers, you know, a better quality of life by giving them more money to their pockets. Truly, I was put in a very bad position. That's all I have to say today.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
All right, on the message of respect, I've been approached by friends and some of my seniors that, uh, you don't always respect elders, in particular me. And sometimes you skip Bob and I when we're trying to, to do things, and, uh, I, I think that should be.
I, I apologize, truly do.
That should be taken care of.
I will, I will, I apologize, and I own, I own it, by the way, I'm no, if I make a mistake, it's sometimes it's hard sitting here controlling the residents from speaking and.
I know.
Kind of the back and forth, I, I apologize, but I can tell you, anytime I can try to get you to second, or anytime you request on something, uh, I, I request, you know, I, I try to support that, I really do. Councilman Constant, if you feel that way too, tell me, I, I apologize. Honestly, I, it's done. I know, it's done, please. I'm gonna let Roger go next.
Council Chair, thank, thank you for a chance to give me a chance, uh, an opportunity to speak. I think that's one thing that's frustrating, is when I get cut off or told, but not called on. Um, I just wanna say, and, uh, I, I, I wanna reach out to Councilman Sob.
I'm finished.
You see, when we, we try to speak, we have to have a, a demeanor where we can communicate and meet. I have a good rela-, I think, a reach, a favorable relationship with everyone on council. I don't have any animosity to anybody. I don't want animosity. I think we have to find common ground. I think Council Chair, you're work, you're trying your best to bridge and, and build administration and council. I don't want us fighting like Warren had. Warren ran up nine hundred thousand illegal fees, the mayor fighting the council. That's not what we want. We want a situation where we, we have a lot of projects we have to build that we're not. We have a gentleman coming in for Living Cities next week, that's gonna talk about how to change renters into homeowners. How to give them fifteen thousand grants, how to give a hundred thousand small businesses, so we can redistribute our city, take care of Van Born. We have EB Five Projects, what we wanna do for Main Street for the city. I'm just saying, I work for all of us, and, uh, I don't like the, being attacked, but it's part of the game, I understand. I, I think if we don't attack one another in this public forum, go to the person that you have a problem with and confront them with it, face to face peacefully. And not use this as a forum to attack people, to build a, a, a reputation, or, 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 or gain followers. Go one-on-one with the person, don't attack them in the public here. Then you get a resolution, because now it's retaliation. And that's what we don't want. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council, Councilman Wenzel?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I'd, I'd like to, uh, congratulate Mike Shahadi on acquiring that property and, uh, I'm hoping he, uh, develops it, something that benefits the residents of Dearborn Heights. Congratulations, Mike, on that. And, um, this Saturday, September twenty-seventh, is the thirty-second annual, uh, Dearborn Heights Firefighters Chili Cookoff. It starts at noon and lasts till dusk. It's a great event, it's a great family event, so go out there, it's at Parkland Park. Uh, go out there with your family, it's, it's a really fun time, games and stuff to go all day long. Um, it's supposed to be a good time. And, uh, tomorrow night at eight o'clock at Swapco Park in, uh, south end of Dearborn Heights, we have a, a movie night. Outdoor movie night, starts at eight. Uh, there'll be refreshments, uh, concession stand open. And, um, City Council, along with our clerk's office and our treasurer's office, is hosting and organizing our first annual Dearborn Heights Employee Family Picnic. Long overdue, and it's gonna be held on, uh, September twenty-first at the Elite Sports Center on Kenlock Street, and, uh, it's from.
Two to six.
Yeah, two, it's from two o'clock to six o'clock. And we want all of our boys to show up. It's gonna be a great time, we have games, activities, we're having a baked bean battle. Bring your best baked bean recipe, prizes awarded for the best baked beans. Um, and we're maybe thinking about a softball game also, if we get enough employees that wanna play softball. And we're looking for sponsors for the event in the form of, uh, donation, monetary donations, food donations, or raffle items. You can contact any, uh, city council member here, and, um, if you have any kind of donations for this event. Thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you, guys.
I'll donate to this, Tom.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from, uh, council? Okay, now can I see a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Sob.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, uh, Brian. All in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you.